Good morning. Today is Wednesday, February 17th. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners. Now we're, I'll call them in to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You get a little fogged up there? Okay. We have no minutes to approve. Public input. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Yes?
Good morning. I'm Cindy Farmer, and we've arrived on here for something coming up in next December. Several of us are working on things that include Patty Clark, Galen Reeves, Sherri Coy, and Michelle Conners, and we're trying to create something called like December to Remember. We're doing a little brainstorming. We're not ready to lay it all out yet, but we wanted you to hear from us first rather than rumors around town and you don't point the hat. We haven't heard about this. The idea is to have various activities throughout the community during December, kind of like mailbox variation of the twelve days of Christmas with events. The plan would incorporate the annual events held such as the craft dinner, the senior citizen Christmas tree and decoration ornament, or tree and decor auction along with the parade of lights and had some new events to, that would involve both commercial and residential kind of things like a competition of light up a block, residential lighting, commercial lighting, things like that. Once we have things lined out, we would definitely be back to ask for your support and permission to do things. Any questions about any last questions?
Not really, but I think it's a great idea.
We just wanted to let you know what was going on.
Yeah, it is a good idea.
And obviously wherever we're at in the COVID situation, we'll look at what's done and not done, but we're going to be optimistic. So just wanted to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
I was just wondering, I would like to talk about the Persian County Commission Resolution of Emergency Powers you guys talked about or passed. I would like to possibly amend or appeal that because it seems like it was so watered down that it was really insignificant for our county and for our small businesses. My name is Amanda Burrows. And I'm just really worried about our small businesses that they aren't going to, they're going to pay taxes in our county, and this started out as a slow to spread, and now we're looking in over a year. I don't know how some of these businesses in our county are making it. And I looked on the OSHA website and there are sixteen complaints or referrals against businesses here in Persian County, and I don't know if those are going to be converted to actual violations. But if they are, I would like to see something more like what White Pine put in place where they had, we're a smaller county like White Pine, and they said that OSHA couldn't come into their county unless they quarantined for fourteen days, which kind of made sense to me because they have been, those OSHA inspectors have been in many cities like Reno or Vegas checking going into businesses that are possibly contaminated, and then coming into our county, right? And probably spreading the virus more. So I thought that was really good in White Pine's resolution, as well as the fun for the fines for the businesses. If businesses do start to get fined, I don't think anything planned or placed to help the businesses. I know that Eureka County got a fine for one of the local restaurants, and it's $2,950. That's, that's a lot for a small business in Eureka. So I was just hoping to add some more things to that resolution to try to help our small businesses because I'm really concerned. I've talked to a couple of small businesses in town and they said, oh my gosh, yes. And so if nothing else, I'd really like to open it up for more comment so people could come in and voice their concern because every business that I went into, they were like, first of all, they didn't even know there was a resolution passed by our county. And then when I was telling them about the other counties and their resolutions, they said, gee, we'd really like to jump on board with that. So I don't know. I'm hoping you can get it on me to do it. I'd like to see that happen.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Good morning. I'm Becky. I'm here with Superior Land Management, and I just wanted to come in today and express my appreciation for Persian County and the commission and in particular Sheriff's Office. I am moving next Friday to Idaho for a permanent promotion to, I don't know if you keep bringing this to Superior Land Management, and my supervisor Logan Briscoe will be taking over the running man planning position. Well, duties that I've had until he can find my replacement, but I just wanted to come in and say thank you. And I really appreciated all the support and my time working here.
I've appreciated you attending meetings and doing everything you do out at that other place out there. And I just say very good job.
Thanks.
Yeah, very good job.
Good job, Becky.
Yeah, thank you, Becky, and we're gonna miss you.
Yes.
I'm gonna miss you guys.
Okay, any public comments on Zoom? Justin?
I'm not seeing any.
Not seeing any, okay.
So can I address Amanda Burrows' comments?
Yes.
So you made the request that the county revisit its resolution, and so one option that the commission has is placing that on the agenda for discussion and action at its next meeting in March. So at the end of this meeting, there's a very small item that says future agenda items, and at that time, the board will talk about whether to put that on, and I'm sure that they will. But that's the process. That's how it works, Amanda.
And the meeting in March is when?
March 3rd.
Okay, number three, review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or extension of a business.
I didn't see anything. I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Rowdy Park.
So as you know, we've been busy since we last seen you. We also, I need to inform you guys that we got, we have a bridge on Union Road that is crumbling to,
Yeah.
for lack of a better term, and I'm going to go ahead and put a weight limit on that. Does that need to be on an agenda, Mr. Price? No? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. I thought I had signs. I don't, but I'll notify some of the affected people. Karen knows now.
Well, Dan, are you talking about for emergency construction, or do you just want to put a weight limit on it?
For now, a weight limit.
For now, before we can construct.
Yeah, I think you should put the weight limit up, and then you can put it up, the board can put it on the agenda for March 3rd and just right away to do it, given the fact that it sounds like it's emergent.
Yeah, it is. It's ugly.
I don't think it's a lot different than it has been for quite a while, but I've had a few people that know what they're looking at, look at it, and they're going to meet with the Q and D, a Q and D person that is on the bridge over the river right now overseeing that project. He's going to look at it, kick some ideas around, give his thoughts. Me and Mr. Rafferty went out there and looked at it with Mr. Mike McGinnis, and McGinnis thought we should put a weight limit on it. So did the Water District.
Yeah. Was it, because we did this once before.
Yeah.
Was it like ten? Ten ton?
Yeah.
I talked to Tom Mora to see how it would affect him, and he said it won't affect me one bit. They just go down Union with the cattle trucks, and he mentioned that we're going back to ten.
Yeah, that's who I was going to talk to. That's one of the main people that did the fast, probably Karen and Dean.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mora. So I'm glad he's good with it.
He's okay.
I don't know. We had a weight limit on it years ago, and we lifted it. I don't know why. I guess we, well, we redepact it, so maybe that there was a problem with the debt. But now the whole structure's crumbling, so that's where we're going with that. Then I get a lift to see how we're going to fix it, where we're going to get the money, and I'll get the work on that. So anyways, beyond that, me, myself, I hold sand decor. Me and Jeff went to Idaho to look at a tin leader. That didn't pan out so good. It was completely rusted through the cab. The running gear stuff is pretty good. Didn't realize that, so that didn't work out. Probably won't do that again. Helped put some signs up at the airport for Mr. Rafferty, went up and packed some holes up the core. Cleared weeds at the cemetery for Cheryl. She's been asking me to get that done for about a year probably. So finally got a minute, went and did that. Got the speed limits put up on Relief Candy Road. Hauled some blades around. We're playing hopscotch around the county, trying to get the worst roads. Checked some roads. That's the reason we're playing hopscotch. Some of them need a point and others, so getting that. Also, I put a pulver in out here on Millie's Road that was, that was rusted through, that was brought to my kitchen. A rancher. So then Jerry and Robert, Robert basically finished Blading Grass Valley Road, so most of it's in really good shape right now, and of course plowed snow around that area. And then Jerry opened up going towards Highcroft, the mine I couldn't think of last meeting, and over to Emily Summit, and now they're working on the back of Rythatch Road. Very busy, very beat up road. They're almost done, so that's a good thing. We're going to go out here to Halfway House with those blades. We're going to get that here, and we're going to get on that road. I'm going to help them. It needs it pretty badly. Kevin and Bill are in the Dagel, Dagel Pass, Pleasant Valley area. Hopscotching around there. Dagel, it snows. They gotta go plow it. Pull people out. We've got a couple of people stuck up there, so they did that Friday, and they're blading it right now. Galen's making very good progress out here at Blue Wing. The road's done, just C Punch Ranch. Now he's going to head over to Porter Springs. Really, he's going to meet in the middle. You have four blades out there to get that road fixed up. And also him and Galen and Jason went and picked up this city garbage truck earlier in the week. So we've got that done. And that's pretty much it. Doesn't sound like much, but we've been busy.
You're always busy. Good job.
You guys have any questions on that?
We.
Do you need permission to go bid for Mag Chloride, please?
Is this for next year?
This spring. It's going to come out of this fiscal budget, this regional street budget.
Are you gonna, is Regional Streets going to meet the first meeting in March?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. Mr. Rafferty asked for more time, and it didn't hurt my feelings. I've been able to get other stuff done, be able to study up a little bit, and that's going to be a pretty big meeting, I believe.
So Mr. Chair, are you ready for a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve going out to bid for Mag Chloride.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to go up for Mag Chloride. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
The landfill, we're going to have a pretty expensive repair to the dozer. Basically, it's maintenance. The tracks are watered up, so we've got to put new tracks on it. We're working through that right now. I think it's going to be in the neighborhood of $20,000. I'll make plus or minus, but it's got to be done. It's a vital piece of equipment up there, so we're working through that. And then I got to apologize. I didn't see on the agenda about talking about raising the rates, so I did no homework for that end. Actually, I started that before, but dropped it, so I apologize for that. Really have a lot to add there, except we could always use more money. We're running in a deficit up there. So if you guys choose to do that, I think it'd be a good idea. I mean, no one wants to ever raise taxes, but it's not been, it's not changed since 1996.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's on the agenda to have that discussion, so.
Yeah.
I think it's time. I'm not sure how much, because right now it's 120.
Yep.
I don't know if, I'd have, we'd have to get with Reen to see what we would need, you know, whether $30, you know, $150 or something. I don't know.
Right. I kicked some numbers around. If you wanted to hire another person, it would have to be a lot. I don't think we're going to go there, but.
Yeah.
How much was a lot?
Oh, I apologize. I don't want to even.
You don't want to guess.
I'm not good at math in my head. I can do it pretty good on paper and calculator, but I think, I think it would have had to go, Carol, to like 180 bucks to even come close to finding.
Which would be a $50 increase, yeah.
And that was.
Or no.
I can't remember what percentage that was either.
A $60 increase. My math isn't good this morning.
Like I said, I can do pretty good with the calculator.
Well, it's okay. It's a $60.
We'll look at it, because we have to. Mainly for operating expenses.
Yeah, if you did 60, that's a 50% increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's numbers I was kicking around the field there, so I don't know. I think we should look at raising the sum, at least narrow that gap of what's coming in and what's going out. And even, of course, when we get that loader paid off, it'd be a much better shape there, but then we got to look at replacing them even more expensive piece of equipment in the next probably, I don't know, five to 10 years, the dozer, so that'll be another big payment.
Yeah.
Did the company that's going to clean up the burn pile, did they meet with Mitch yet?
I don't know. He never, he never indicated that.
Because they were, when they were talking, when they were out here, they were talking about whether we have the room or if it would fill up cells.
Right.
And Heidi was going to have them meet with Mitch.
Yeah, I don't know if that happened, not to my knowledge, but that doesn't, you know, I don't, I talked to him this morning and mentioned it. I did, I did talk to him about what they've been doing and what's going on. I try to keep up out there, but sometimes we don't talk for a week or so. I will find out though.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they're willing to haul it somewhere else, it'd probably be better for us.
Well, it would be cheaper to haul it here, but it depends on what, you know, how far they have to haul if we can't, if it'll fill up cells or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be.
Well, and I would think we could charge them too for it. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Why not? Move this.
Yeah.
It's taken from one taxpayer-funded outfit to another, but Andy's probably got a bigger pocket. I could get behind that if they're good with it. You know, it's not a great deal of money, but every little bit helps.
But you would normally charge anyway.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
All right, and then recycling, I have an update on that. We did have a recycling meeting last Thursday. We had a good attendance. Frankie Graham was there from Core. Steve and Lucy Peters were there. Steve Peters works for the city. He took Joe Krim's place. And the board, we had a quorum, so the board met, and Joe Krim is going to start bailing so that we can see how long it will take to get caught up. And then we're going to have another meeting on the Friday, the 26th, and so we're hoping as soon as we can to get it reopened again. And we're looking at avenues for the recycling materials and stuff.
Yeah. Let us, let me know when we have this, though. We have a double truck out there, so no problem.
Yeah.
I did get a letter of resignation. It's all good. It's Karen from the next.
Yeah, and that's from Susie Bendor, right? Yeah, Susie Bendor and Doris Bridges both are going to resign from the recycling board because after recycling's been shut down for so long, they've done other things, and Doris is going to hang on so that we have a quorum for a while, and then when we get, you make sure that we have somebody else appointed, and she'll probably resign too, so. Okay, and then, oh, that's, then my other question's for John, sorry.
My goodness.
Carmen?
Well, thank you for taking that phrase at recycling.
You're welcome.
How's your staff, your volunteers? Do you need more volunteers?
We will when we, yes, and are you willing to help?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great.
Because I'm over there used to two weeks to be capable of doing the pre-deck, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, we will need volunteers, no question. And I did have a meeting with the city, and it's something that we'll talk about at our combined city and county meeting, but they might be willing to take on the volunteers and tracking them and everything else, so. But we can talk about that more when we get past that, so. Anyway, thank you.
Reen reminded me of another issue that came up with Rowan. I forgot. I apologize. Our fuel dispensing system up in Emily, the printout, you know, it's a great system. Each vehicle has a key. Each department has, you know, we track it that way.
Oh, nice.
This is what we're getting.
But it's ineligible.
You need new ink or what?
Well.
No, the printer is shot.
Yeah, so this will be like the third one. We just replaced it last year to the tune of a lot. It's always expensive with the.
Boy, just last year and it's doing that already.
Yeah, yeah. And so anyhow, the people that came in that supposedly fixed it a year ago, anyhow, they give us a quote for, to modernize the system, and their quote is 13,000.
Oh.
Yeah. So working through that with Reen, I've got another quote coming from another company. Reminds me, need to call them, but that guy indicated it'd be 20-plus thousand for a new fuel management system, as they call it.
You could pay for an attendant.
Yeah, right? So I don't know. We're going to get it on the agenda for next meeting. We'll talk about it, I guess.
What about using, also looking for the same deal within the airport, you know, like QT technologies?
I thought you had, so I was dealing with LA Perks. You got another company for me, John?
Yeah.
QT technologies.
Absolutely. I'll get the. Okay, all right.
That was like 10 grand, wasn't it?
Yeah. Anyhow, there's basically us, Emily Fire, and the Sheriff's Department. Mostly us, followed by the Sheriff's, and of course Emily Fire uses it as well, so. And we could share that cost. Just put it on a little bit or something. All right?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep going.
John, building a grant.
Good morning.
Since our last meeting, I met with the pool people for the rest ward, and they did some chlorine samples. We had to pull out for them and keep their levels at bay while they were working. Do not know the results yet. I'm sure it's going to take some while, a while for them to analyze the core samples themselves. Took one that was fairly deep into the side of the pool, and a couple that were a little shallow in the bottom. I could tell you what that's going to yield for us, but we did do that.
Good, finally.
Yeah. Helping a lot over at the community center, trying to keep the cleaning and the setups the best we can. I still with three people of my staff. Well, I have two that are out.
Yeah.
For a while, and another one is going to be out for a little bit longer, starting this, next week. We're doing everything we can to keep that building, the community center, cleaned up and set up, and still trying to help Mr. Rafferty out over with any touch-up stuff over there at the senior centers now. We did get the stove removed out of the community center this last weekend. That was a heck of a task.
Did they have to take?
We got the doors. Yeah, it had maybe a quarter inch of gap to go out of that door. We have not put the new one in. The new one, because it's being used throughout the day this, for the next week or so, the stove is not in use, and this stove kind of threw me for a loop. When it was delivered, it didn't have the feet on. The last couple of stoves that we have, that went at the feet on when they were delivered, this one's laying straight flat on the pallet. Not a whole lot of room to move with it, and it's extremely heavy. We've also been replacing a few lights around the courthouse fixing drivers and other buildings that the lights were starting to go out. We can do that as well. And that's really about it.
The courthouse front door?
Well, that's been painted, hand-done with the, like, the original hand-done oak leaf and acrylic paints. It's drying. It takes quite a few days for that to cure. It'll be done by the fifth, 11th of March, when it should be done carrying, takes like three weeks to cure completely. And the ramp and the trees done before spring, being trimmed up for a long period.
Did you get a quote for what it would cost to remove the trees on those two lots?
Yes, it was $5,000.
And that's not taking out the stumps?
That is taking it down to the ground. Then that is ten trees around the power lines and next to the houses and everything else without damage.
And then I have a question. Dan Hill mentioned about putting up signs at the airport, and those signs, I think, say who to contact, have a phone number for who to contact for the gate code. Whose phone number is that?
One's the dispatch and one's the district attorney's office.
So the Buildings and Grounds supervisors in charge of the airport shouldn't his phone number be on there?
Does he want to call at night or on weekends?
I get called at weekends anyhow.
I think the system, the way it was set up, will work just fine. I mean, John has the gate code, so whatever.
Does the DA want to?
No, we don't mind.
You don't mind?
As long as it's during hours. I mean, we're on call 24/7.
Okay.
But I don't want to get called at 2:00 in the morning.
No, that's when it goes to the sheriff's dispatch.
Yeah, and I get a picture of those companies anyway, so it's, it doesn't make a difference to me. I'm more than willing to accept that, too.
My, yeah, my staff has the number and.
Yeah.
Do they keep a list of who is getting the number or anything?
We can do that if we need to.
Well, I'm just asking.
That was the plan, and also to, as well as the dispatchers, is to ask them why they think they need in the airport. So we don't want to give it out to just everybody.
Correct. I agree with that one.
Yeah.
Well, I told Larry I was going to miss that as a drag racing spot.
Yeah, but you have the code, so you can get in and go drive.
Now everyone will know.
Any other questions or requests?
Well, it's the same code for everybody, right? So there's no way to know who's in there other than the cameras.
The cameras will, I have a camera that's locked in on that.
And we're going to talk about that.
Anyway.
No more problems at the gate since yesterday?
No. I have to get with Mr. Rafferty to figure out if he can try to explain to me what he did to reset the gate.
Yeah.
Other than that?
I don't have anything. Thank you very much.
Ambulance report.
Do you have a VFL under Building Grounds?
There was? Oh, that's right, for the, for VFL.
I need to abstain.
Oh, yes, you do. So this is listed in two places under the CARES Act under here, and this item was in the original approved list that we presented to the state, and this is under the CARES Act because it's a backup system for the COVID or any other pandemic, and with hospital beds and wiring should we need it. So if you're ready for.
I am.
I will make a motion that we go ahead and approve the BSL electric proposal for electrical wiring. At the community center for backup hospital beds to be paid by the CARES spending act in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars.
And I'll second that motion. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain?
Stain.
Okay, motion, motion passed.
Thank you.
Now we have ambulance report. Nobody here. Love Lock Fire Department, nobody here, Grass Valley, I did get a, an email from Sean. He's doing COVID vaccinations today. So anyway, so it couldn't be here. Grass Valley Fire Department, very busy year so far, they've had about one call every other day. Membership and training doing well, budget for next year submitted to Reeve. And for his emergency management report. The second doses for the Love Lock Senior Center and prison staff is going on today. Excuse me. Another batch next week on the twenty-fourth at the health clinic. We are getting second doses, but no first doses for two more weeks. Currently have about four hundred on hand, which will go pretty quickly with the two scheduled events. The state has fifty-two thousand earmark for Persian County to assist with COVID vaccinations. And he needs to get with, with them some, some, some more information on how to spend. If you, I'll call later this week to discuss, you'll call me. State is also working on a plan to release additional vaccines specifically for mines. Is discussed with Core Rochester and currently waiting on the state plan to solidify. But this will help us as it, won't count against our county cap. As far as the Grass Valley Advisory Board goes, nothing to report, meetings are still canceled. No Emily, no right patch. Safety, we did have a, a report from Cheryl, Cheryl's over at, at the shop pod too, so.
Do you want me to read?
Sure, if you would.
This is from Cheryl Hawes, Health Department, we have been keeping busy with the COVID vaccine clinics and our regular clients at the health clinic. In the month of January, we did a COVID clinic at the community health clinic on January fifth, twenty twenty-one for the first dose. Forty doses were given for tier one and we started to vaccinate seniors seventy-five and up at that time. In between, we saw clients for other services rendered on that same day. On the twentieth of January, we did a COVID clinic at the senior center in the morning. And the correctional center in the afternoon, a total of a hundred and twenty-three doses were given on that day. On January twenty-eighth, we were back at the firehouse to give second doses and a few first doses. Total of sixty doses were given. February second at the health clinic, we did second dose plus some one doses, total of fifty for that day. Moving right along, on the weekend of February sixth and seventh. Safeway came in and did a total of three hundred first doses for sixty-five and above. Teachers and utility workers, transportation workers, also county and city employees. Today will we be, we will be back at the senior center and correctional center giving second doses. On the twenty-fourth, we will be at the health clinic giving first doses again, that day is filled and they will be doing sixty doses. Safety department, I have started yearly mandatory safety classes for our departments. Also, we hope to be changing out some of our AEDs, which will be becoming obsolete over the next year. We will also be starting safety meetings and building inspections. Cemetery department, this past week, we had a meeting with Bruce Chaney from Spatial Generations in reference to our cemetery maps. It has taken more time than I thought, but I think the maps are almost ready. Once we have the maps dialed in, we can start with a new software and inputting information. All in all, the, the cemeteries are looking good, no major issues at this time. Anyway, thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, library, I saw you get in here.
Good morning, thank you very much Kathy for coming.
I don't have a lottery part, we're still doing, you know, we're still alive and well at the library and we're, we're. Checking out books to people and meeting at the door. We put all of our new books on carts and they are in that little lobby area and people can come in and look at those and pick what they want. Or they can call us and we'll find something for them. They could either say, you know, I want James Patterson's latest book, or they could say, I want a mystery. Or, you know, my daughter likes books on horses, find us something, that kind of thing. So we're doing a lot of that, we get phone calls every day from people wanting us to find books for them. And we let people make an appointment and come in and use the computers. The reason we ask for them to do appointments is we only have two right now. Normally, we would have four, but in order to get them six feet apart, we have to put a couple away. And. Well, that's about all I can think of for that, everybody's working on projects, Cameron's had some, Andy's had some, I've had some. But, you know, whether the people are in the library or not, we're still, you know, we're still busy and, and doing what we do, so. And we are looking at the possibility of opening. And that will kind of depend on what we hear from Dr. Van Gilder at the next health board. So it's called Board of Health Meeting. When, when the increase in new cases, you know, has, has backed down a lot and we can do that, but. You know, I need to protect my staff and, and our, our patrons, you know, nobody wants to check out a book that. Every time somebody turns a page, they look at their finger and, you know, so. Anyway, we're, we're doing the best we can about when the books are returned, and if this is any library material. Movies, magazines, you know, whatever people are asking for. They go into quarantine for a week and before we check them in and put them down. So.
So Kathy, I asked you to check with other libraries of what safety procedures they're putting in place. Because there are other libraries that are open.
Yeah, they have reopened in the last few days for, for, for a while, about three weeks or so, just about every library in the state was closed. And, and a lot of them are still doing curbside only, there's a few that are open. More or less regular hours, but they. Some of them have decreased their hours, but a lot of them are still doing the curbside pickup. And I have things from the state library, I've got it from, you know, this is, sorry, you're blurry with the glasses on. We, the, the state library has information for us and the American Library Association has information and. Where the companies we get books from, JIMCO has a lot of the information. And basically, they say, start slowly, you know, open for, for a few hours and for just a few people at a time before we. Really open it up, so, and some of them let kids come in and some of them don't. You know, I, I think the kids need to start coming back or they're gonna forget that the library is even there. But, one thing that this has done is we've gotten a big surge in the, the electronic resources that are available for members of our co-op. So, the overdrive system that we have, has a lot of, it has books and ebooks, recorded books. And it has some movies, that kind of thing, so, and that, from last year to this year has gone up a lot.
So is that Libby, is that what you're talking about?
It, oh, it's, the system is called overdrive and you use Libby to access it.
Yeah, cuz I use, it's Libby, but, okay.
That's one of the apps you use to, to access it, right? So, you know, we don't have our policy exact, we worked on one, geez, months ago, last year sometime. You know, we thought, I was certain that, you know, a few weeks and we'd be back to normal, and obviously, you know, that's not happening, so. You know, we're, we're taking the policy that we made up last time and making sure it still is appropriate for what, what we're doing now. So.
Did you look at the new directives that the governor put out Friday?
Last Friday?
If, if not, I have a copy, but it does list libraries and what you have to, yeah.
Yeah.
The changes or the restrictions that are lightening up. One effective Monday and another one effective March fifteenth.
Right, I saw this last one, I don't think I saw the one from Friday. We were off Monday and I don't remember looking at it yesterday, so, no, I haven't seen it.
So, might look at it.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Go, go, then I have.
They've opened the libraries at the schools already. The elementary school library is back open and the kids are going back to the library there, so. I, I can see having. Think that it's a valuable asset to open for these kids.
And not just the kids, the whole community is wanting the library back open again. And I think it's been closed long enough. I asked you if other libraries had people wear gloves when they came in, you know, if you supplied gloves, so that when they're touching things or masks or whatever.
Masks are all mandatory.
What about gloves?
No one has mentioned gloves.
Okay.
Even, even in Friday's directive, it doesn't really, it doesn't mention gloves, it does mention masks, of course.
Right.
One, one of the other things, not necessarily library, is changing from four people to a table to six people to a table, which is great. And I think almost all of them are at a fifty percent capacity, starting fifteenth of March.
Right, they're in, encouraging people to only stay, some of the libraries only let people in for ten minutes at a time. I don't, I don't think there's any way we can monitor how long people stay in the library. You know, people come in and they're doing stuff and we're busy and, I mean, we can't fool around, so I'm not sure how they're doing that. Ten minutes, one library is allowing them to come in for an hour. We're not a research library, we're mostly for recreational reading. We do help people with any questions that they have, you know, they can come in and we can, there's things that we can do to help, but. Anyway, yes.
So, I mean, I think what you were going to also, I, it's time to open.
Yes, it is.
I'm, I'm, I'm doing the same thing with this senior center and making arrangements and getting approvals. And we're, we're gonna do it.
Good. Um, do, are you waiting for Dr. Van Gilder to?
I've talked to her several times and.
We don't have to wait till the meeting on March third, because we can contact her in the meantime. But it's becoming a real priority for everyone that would reopen.
What Dr. Van Gilder's commited on as the senior center is that when I open or when we open, most seniors will have had their second shot. A lot of them are getting them today.
Right, right.
So that makes it clearer for her to be able to say yes, open.
And that's because they're a vulnerable.
Yeah.
Group of, of individuals.
Right, and, and we have those people coming to the library as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you can check with the schools and see what criteria they've put in place, if any.
They have more of a. It, it's the same people, you know, the teachers, the class, if they're doing something wrong, they can, it can affect their grade. Can't do any of that in the library. So, you know, the school library and the public library are not the same thing, and we have all ages in there, so. I'm not sure that it would really help that much to talk to the school. But the kids are used to wearing the masks and I don't think they'll be a problem coming in. I think it's some of the adults who refuse to wear a mask and, you know.
Yeah, and that is a requirement, they have to wear a mask. If you don't wanna wear a mask, then, don't come in.
But, but then they'll say, well, I have asthma, I can't wear a mask. And, you know, I, can I, can I stop somebody?
Yeah, yeah.
I can stop them.
You can put the requirement on for social distancing and also that they wear a mask, if someone says, I have a medical condition. Then you can invite them to leave until they can bring a doctor's note or something like that, and even under those circumstances, you can still ask them, send somebody else to the library for them. As far as social distancing, you know, maybe turn on every other computer so that it's easier for people to maintain social distancing.
Well, we've only got two out right now and they're six feet apart, so Cameron has done a really good job of rearranging that area, so. You know, for the things that people do, they are six feet apart.
So as of February fifteenth, you can allow fifty percent of capacity, so whatever your fire code says maximum limit for the library is.
March fifteenth?
No, February fifteenth.
Just fifty percent? Oh, for libraries.
Yeah. You can allow fifty percent of your fire code capacity in the library, provided that they maintain social distancing and that they wear masks and things like that. And it's just like if someone were to enter the library and be disruptive, right, I mean, everyone knows you need to be quiet in the library. Similar rule would apply with someone who's not adhering to social distancing or wearing a mask, you just invite them to leave.
Okay, and if they don't leave?
Then what would you do if they were being disruptive?
Well, depending on how bad it was, I'd call nine one one.
And you would do the same thing here.
And then, an officer will come? When they say that I have a person here that won't wear a mask?
If you have someone that won't leave the premises, when you're asking to leave the premises, they're trespassing.
Okay. Okay?
Also to those into, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know, is, are they gonna get taken to jail? Probably not, is my office going to prosecute them? Probably not, right?
Right.
Unless it's, you know, serial behavior, but. We, we know, we all know people who don't like to wear masks or don't believe in social distancing and. But at the same time, we've been ordered to do that and a lot of people feel strongly the other way.
Yeah.
That people do need to wear masks and do need to social distance and we need to be mindful of that and respectful of that.
Okay. One thing that we will need is a stockpile of masks, because.
Yeah, like they are, they have a box there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you forget your mask, you put it on.
Right.
I'm sure John has that.
And you can ask John to see if he has one there.
And if he doesn't, Sean does.
Yeah.
Sean Burkes. What I was gonna say, those individuals that refuse to wear a mask, that, you can do the same thing you did before, they can request a book and pick up a book. They don't have to come into the library.
I think we're gonna keep the, the pickup at the door. It has, it's not a drain on our time. And there will be people who have underlying health concerns and things like that that don't wanna come in, so. So I think we'll, we'll probably keep that. But I know a lot of people want to come in. It was interesting, from March to June 20th, the end of the fiscal year, we only circulated, I think it was 300 fewer children's books than the year before. And, and I mean, that, that's one person can check out 300 books in, you know, four months. But they come in, you know, for their kids and they're getting the limited collection of books at a time, you know. So people are using the service and they're, they're finding Overdrive with Libby, so, yeah.
Well, I know that in the last year I have bought probably $300 worth of books. And that's because I wanted my grandchildren to read. But I also want them to have access to the library, so the books they can't find at the elementary school library, I would like to, them to be able to come back in the library and pick out books. So I really would like to see it open.
Right, right, so, and depending on the age of the kids, they're, they may need an adult with them.
They are nine and 10.
Okay, they, they would probably be okay.
So, Mr. Chair, when are you planning on opening the senior center?
March 8th.
March 8th.
So it's, and there's a couple of reasons behind that, but that's the target right now. So I think you need to do the same thing, you need to set an open date and then figure out what you need to do to comply to.
And I think you should look at sooner than the 8th, I think. If you can't do it next week, then do it March 1st. We don't need to be waiting any longer.
Or are we?
That's a Monday, two Mondays away.
Oh, gotcha.
How many employees are there?
Three, there's three of us.
And if you have any questions, Kathy, you can call me.
Okay.
Or email me.
Right, thanks, thanks.
But I think that needs to be your target date.
Okay.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, Justin, you're up.
So I don't have anything new over to report to you over the last report I gave in the month. Been doing a lot of support. We've had several departments ordering new equipment. So we've been getting new computers ordered and set up and that whole process. We're just waiting on the finishing of the cabling in the courthouse for the network upgrade projects. And we'll be able to deploy the firewalls and tie that off. And then we'll move into the pre-planning for evaluating and purchasing a new food system for the next fiscal year. That's all I have.
We may have to talk again on that modem over there at the senior center.
Okay.
It, it sounds like from notes I've had here that it failed again this morning, right when they needed it for the health department.
Of course.
Yeah, so we gotta do something.
Okay, we'll, we'll probably need to contact AT&amp;T and request a replacement. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Community Center, we have.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Couple things, one is the approval of cost of supplies to refurbish 22 round tables.
That utilizing the high.
I'm here, can you hear me?
I couldn't really read my total there. Is it $335.47?
I show 159.80.
Okay, what am I looking?
I don't know, we've got a stand on my head.
Yeah, I know.
159.80.
Oh, that's just for the Pauli Ur thing.
Yeah, if you look at that second page.
Oh, is it?
I don't have a second page, but I have a down at the bottom, 335.
335? Yeah. 335.47.
Okay, I couldn't tell if it was a three or an eight. Yeah, can you see, 335.47.
Oh, yeah. Oh, the 159.80 was just for the one.
Yeah, just for that, yes.
She is on. Are you there, Dixie?
I am here, but I cannot get my, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, great.
There, there we go.
I thought she had a filter on.
Okay.
So that's cute.
Okay, as you can see, we're, we're renting a little bit more and more in the community center. And this past month so far, we've brought in 400, $4,825 in net proceeds. So I thought that was pretty good, and then we're booked for the next four weeks, just totally solid. So it's good that we're opening up a little bit more. The, you answered my question earlier with the backup systems for COVID patients and the installation of the VSL Electrical Installation business, so we're gonna scratch that off. And Lucy Peters has been my go-between regarding the roundtable restoration by students and also Bill Laird. The restorations are scheduled to begin in March. The refurbishing is being done by FBLA, which is the Future Business Leaders of America, and FCCLA, Family, Career and Community Leaders of America, formerly FHA. What a tongue twister. The amount that they estimated to do the job is $335.47 and we need to know if this amount is allowable. Can you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, okay. I wanted to thank Buildings and Grounds of Bruce Mazzeros, Frank Guzalves for coming over to the community center to help with custodial work for the past week. I really appreciate them. I wanted to know if it's been decided as to which entity the community center will be nested under the senior center or the PSCDA board, if that's been decided yet. I sold several of the chairs that were stored at the 4H Building to individuals and many chairs were given to county entities. The good chairs were given to the county entities this past Wednesday and Buildings and Grounds took the remaining chairs to the landfill. The funds have been deposited. The community center kitchen per COVID and the governor, can we open the community center up just a little more so residents can have the use of the stove? That was a question.
Question, right?
Right.
We have to look at the, the guidelines for it, but we've got to get the stove installed first.
Yeah, I think it's, for a community center, it's up to 250 people. Yeah, it is.
We only have a group of 30 people coming in for a four-day scrapbooking retreat. And they use the stove for warming foods because they're here for four days. So that's kind of what I was getting at and I was hoping the stove would be installed before the 24th.
When will they be in, Dixie?
On the 24th.
24th of?
Next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
I have, the days that I have open in March are the 20th, the 23rd and the, oh, sorry, the 25th they'll be in. So I have the 20th, 23rd and 25th of March available. I'm sorry, the 20th, 23rd and 24th of March available to install if they could possibly do it then.
So you'll have to talk to.
He has to figure out how to get that off.
What's that?
Why can't they open the kitchen if they can have 250 people in the community center?
There's no.
You just can't have a kitchen open?
I didn't hear anyone say that.
Oh, I thought she was asking if they could use the kitchen.
We're replacing the stove and the old stove is already out. The new one isn't in yet and it's a logistics thing of getting it in, it's huge.
Getting it in and it's on a pallet and the weight, the feet aren't attached, so they're going to have to figure out how to lift it up to attach the feet and then get it in the kitchen.
I will talk with John and see what you can do.
Okay, that'd be really great if you could do that for me and I don't have anything else unless you have questions for me.
Is there anything else, Dixie?
No, I don't have anything else, but do you have questions for me?
Yeah, I want to know how you got that sign backwards in the back of that picture.
You know what? I do not know because I was trying to get it on there right way, but I think I'm gonna have to take that off and flip it. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Dixie.
All right.
I don't know if you heard, Shayla said that she will get with John Hanke and.
Okay. All right, that would be great.
We approved cost of supplies.
No.
We finally got to the right dollar amount, but we need to approve that.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and authorize the supply purchase to refurbish the 22 round tables in the amount of $335.47. I will stop in.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Ken.
Okay, that's, that's it for me, so.
Economic Development, Heidi on?
Morning, I'm here. Morning.
Good morning.
So, and I don't really have a whole lot to report. All of you were able to meet with me last week and our project manager for West Coast Salmon, Nevada. That is Ralph Renge and I appreciate your time and coming out to meet him. Looking forward to the future progress of this project. As most of you know, this will be about 300 jobs for the county, property taxes, business, personal property taxes and sales taxes will be coming to the county, so it's a great project and we're really looking forward to the next steps.
And it was on?
I'm sorry.
I said it was on channel two like you thought.
Yeah, I was a little surprised about that, but pleased again, you know, that that got a little bit of press. I actually talked to the reporter and told her to call me back in June. I figured it would be a little bit more exciting when they're pulling permits and maybe actually poking a shovel in the ground, but that's all right, we'll, we'll take everything. So, the other things going on is the Bill Nevada Construction Core Program that is our workforce programming and we're looking to hold our second class in Love Lock. I have a little bit of the logistics to work out. Part of that is making sure that the high school is still okay for us to have the programming there. And then the other part of it is I will need to find a new instructor. The instructor that taught the last time is retiring from the high school and moving on to other pursuits, so is not interested in instructing this next course. So, a little bit of logistics, I will have a meeting with Principal Jonathan Reynolds in the next handful of days and get that sorted out and started. And yesterday I participated, well, I listened in on the NDOT State Rail Plan Summit. It was put on by NDOT and also Northern Nevada Development Authority. Love Lock was mentioned as a potential Amtrak stop in the future. I'm going to be printing out the state rail plan and to see, well, just the portions that pertain to Love Lock in Horrydon County. Huge document and see what other opportunities are there for us. Speaking of NDOT, I do meet with Lee Bonner monthly now, myself and Jim Morrison from Humboldt County. Meet with him monthly, talk about what's going on in our counties and, of course, G29 is always on my list to stir him up with. And then the other thing going on is ongoing Brownfields work and we submitted another property for potential Phase 1, Phase 2 assessments. I meet with the core team monthly, as well as we send a lot of emails. The Brownsfield does take up a lot of time, but it's all good. And then the other thing that I'm working on is a rental, residential rental report for our county. It's, it's time, we've had some militaries asking about, you know, what, what, you know, they, they think there's a need for housing in our community, but how can I, how could they verify that and make it actual factual to the members and the, the information that we have available? So anyhow, kind of a little bit of what I'm doing in a nutshell.
I finished meeting last week, I was getting an arrest warrant. Not for the student's office, they'll rat me out because they're here. So sorry.
It's all right, it's okay, you're, you're fine.
Okay, Lacey Dong said that.
Well, my office is in a bit of a tailspin right now. I have a longtime employee who has given her notice and her last day is March 1st. I knew it was coming, but I was kind of hoping that I would have until school got out for, for to actually leave. So that's coming sooner than expected. And then I have another employee who has applied for a position, another position within the county.
Oh, my gosh.
That could be another potential loss. I've scheduled a tax sale for the last week of May through bid for assets again. So we're in the middle of doing the research and getting the notices out for that. And then when I get closer and have more information, I'll bring that back to you guys.
And then what about the properties that, like in Ryth Hatch, that cost more than the tax? You know, the taxes now are more than what the property's worth?
They'll be back on our list, but I'm not sure that we have, you know, I don't, I have to get with the rising and I'm not sure we have, you know, much of the way of reducing those.
So for a long, for a long time, Lacey and I just put that issue on the back burner because we hadn't had a tax sale and then last year's tax sale kind of snuck up on us. But I think this is a good opportunity for us to revisit the issue. And Lacey and I will get together and we'll try to either figure out a resolution or provide a definitive answer as to what the board's options are.
It'd be nice if we could just write off the assessment, which might be an option since, you know.
And we're not alone in this, other counties have properties like this as well.
We call them zombie persons.
Oh, that's a word, yeah.
Yeah, they've been on the wall for so long and no one wants them and the taxes are higher than assessed value and, yeah.
Okay.
And then next month, we'll start the delinquent tax process with one year and three years. It's a busy time for us, not a good time to lose employees.
Oh, gosh.
Yes.
And for the tax sale, did you set a day in May?
I believe, I have to look, I believe it'll start, the online will start, I think it's like Friday, the 25th, and then it'll close the following Tuesday. And then they'll be up for about a month for people just to look at and board bidding.
And you did real well with the online sale last time.
It, it takes a lot of stress off the office and then it did, it brought in a lot of money, so.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
And they're, they're really great to work with.
Did you want to make up the motion?
Oh, and then, sorry. On the tax rule correction, Devon is coming tomorrow to walk Lori and I through that, so I will have those for you.
And you have maybe about 10, you think?
About 10, yeah.
Okay, they're not credits though, right?
At this point, I have no idea, it can all be so long since I've been able to address that. There might be some credits or red flags, that'd be nice.
So we have on the, on the agenda approval to advertise for Bacon administrative clerk 1-2 position.
I will make that motion.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the bad part is we may have two.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Reed?
Before we get into the tax deal, just a quick update. Tyler Technologies has uploaded all the pilots of our US imaging. Stephanie now has over 140,000 documents to verify and index, so she's completely busy for months and months. So she's completely busy for months and months, but then that'll put us online records from 1919 to current. So so far, US Imaging did a really good job with all the scanning they did from all the books, the the quality is very, very good. It's a payroll week this week and an accounts payable week, so everybody's been really busy. Chris has been trying to work the salaries for budget purposes. There's been a couple of hangups because of purse factors and so we're waiting on getting a couple of results from purse and then we'll move forward with that.
Yeah, the purse rate is going up.
Yes, but they have to have a meeting to decide what the ease and or lose rates are, and so that's been a holdup on our end. Um, I started on the budgets, I will tell you, I had to nudge a handful of departments because they didn't make the deadlines. I still have not heard from one department and I sent an email and told them that I will be doing their budget because I can't wait any longer.
Yeah.
I have several that asked for an extension and I'm cool with that because I have plenty to do. But I don't think they really understand how important it is for those 30 days I really gotta have. I I need to get moving. Last night, we received our tentative revenues from Department of Taxation. It didn't come in till 7:00 PM, so I have not even looked at it yet, but I'll need to get moving right now too. I made copies of all of this to reconsider. Lacy and I had a conference call with Kelly, our representative from Taxation. When you give this, I want you to look under the city rate, which is at 3.6592 right now.
Just a second, sorry.
The cap is 3.66 according to Taxation. So right now we have eight one hundredths of a cent that we can increase to put the city at 3.66. That amount of tax increase, in my opinion, is a waste of time.
Yeah, it is, but we can increase the county portions.
No, we can't.
Did she say we can't?
You have to, whatever you're gonna increase Carol is gonna be up in here, which is gonna increase the cities, which is gonna throw them over.
The city pays everything in the county rate, so to increase the county rate, you'll be increasing the city rate.
Okay.
The only way, and we had Bryce involved in a a brief conversation with Lacy and I too, the only way we can increase the county rate is if we set up a fire district.
Could set up a new tax district. But even that's problematic because in order to have a fire district within the boundaries of your fire district, you cannot have an incorporated city. So that's how we could raise the tax rate without involving Love Lock. But the revenues generated by that tax district would not support a fire district.
No.
It's just too low, we ran the numbers and it was what?
Like $110,000.
Every year. And that fire district would encompass the entire county, so imagine the the logistics involved in that.
And that's what Taxation told us, is that the max we could raise the rate would be .0008 cents.
So that'll be an interesting discussion in one of this afternoon's meetings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
We can't tell the city, you know, their rate is is .5624, we can't tell them if they can lower or raise that, that's entirely up to them.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I had no idea. So what I handed you was some, just some research that I did, which was other counties' tax rates. But now it's kind of because I didn't know.
Yeah, you got it from the red book.
Yeah, I I went to the red book, yeah, and I got all of that. And then the other thing was Persian County fee schedules for different departments. And just so everyone knows, these are last year's fees and some of them are fees like, for instance, the Recorder's Office that may have changed and thereby statute, but I just wanted you to be aware of just what, you know, our fees look like. But yeah, it's a new point now on the the tax. Ah geez.
That that's not even worth anybody's time.
Oh, no, no, it's not, because I figured out one cent is like $19,000 and that isn't even one cent. I mean, it's not like, yeah, so.
So it's.
But one of the, one of the things about this, oh, go ahead.
No, why?
One of the things about this printout is that some of these, these can be changed.
Yes.
These percentages, how they're allocated. So if if the board is interested in looking at that, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna pinpoint any one of these. China Springs, for example, cannot be moved, that's set by the legislature and there's an equation involved with how many students we have. That's probably going to increase after this legislative session, there's a bill.
And the state tells me what that amount is.
Right, so China Springs is probably gonna go up, but then you look at um some of these other programs and the amounts, the tax rate on those can be increased and decreased and moved around and and added to the general fund to pay for some of these other costs.
And your indigent funds, you really can't fluctuate either because those are by statute.
And the emergency 911 was approved by voters, so that one, you can't. Um, it only leaves just a few. If China Springs goes up, because they aren't talking about that, that would increase our total, but we'd be over.
It increases our general funds rate.
Okay.
I have to take it out of the general fund. And the HBS, which is the highway victims.
Yes.
That's, that's regulated by the state too, so if HBS or China Springs increase, then I have to reduce the general.
The fund, which isn't good.
We never have changed since I've been here, this 1.3568 has been the same. We just fluctuate from what the state tells us and it'll increase or decrease our general fund.
Oh my gosh.
And we don't even know what those amounts will be until March, because that's when they send me the final pro forma that gives me all the centrally assessed, the real property, all of that that's been collected from the clerk treasures and the assessor's information.
How did the recording fees compare to other counties?
Some counties are, we're at 40, some are at 42 and some are at 44, I believe. Because the commission a couple of years ago had the authority to approve or not approve. And we did go for the child returning fee one.
Yeah.
But then in the last one, we didn't, so more of the counties are at the 40. I think Churchill is at 42 and possibly Washum might be at 44. Everybody's pretty much at 40.
Well, I think we need to look at what fees we charge in different departments, the ones that that we can look at.
You know, one thing comes to mind is like landfill.
Well, yeah, the landfill.
So that's what, that, I mean, that.
It's an assessment.
That's an assessment, not.
Correct.
Right.
And so that one.
TB landfill and weed district all assessments.
So how do you become an assessment?
What do you mean, how do you become?
How do you become one?
So for instance, landfill, we have an assessment, so is that.
An assessment is tied to the property that takes advantage, that that makes itself available to that particular service.
And I believe the landfill and the TB district assessments were done by.
Okay, but can you have an assessment for fire and ambulance?
No. Not that I'm aware of, I would have to research.
I I'm just throwing this out, I mean, I don't know.
And I don't know and I.
But that's a good idea.
I would have to, I'd have to look.
I I know that there's a process to have districts and maybe you can't because of that process, but I mean, what other kind of assessments can we have? And I'm not, believe me, people, I'm not trying to raise your taxes out of whack, I just, there's some things that we need.
Well, aside from a fire protection district, we could also look at a general improvement district for fire and ambulance services under chapter 318, which also creates a new tax entity, but it's not necessarily considered to be a a fire protection district. So what would be like Love Lock Meadows Water District, where it imposes its own tax rate, independent of the county tax rate? That's another option to consider. And I, and I think that's probably the way out of this, to avoid the fire protection district and go with the GID under 318. But that's something that I'll have to research and that has to be approved by the county commissioners and there's a lot of advertising involved.
Well, and and public input, Mary.
Right, and along with a general improvement district, that has its own separate board and it's not necessarily the Board of County Commissioners. It's a separate tax district, so. Uh, maybe, maybe the board should start talking to people and asking if there's an appetite for that.
Yeah. Well, Reen.
Okay, so, so we're all in the same understanding, I'll notify Taxation, there will not be any changes to our tax rate at this time.
Yeah, and that's just the total, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, not how it's distributed within.
Yeah, I just have to tell them that we're not gonna make any changes and they'll leave everything else as.
Wow. Thank you though for finding that out. And thanks Lacy.
Thank you.
Boy, yeah. Oh, Lori.
Hello. How's everybody?
Okay.
Good.
I'm depressed now. I said I'm depressed.
I know a little bit about that, not much, I'll have to reach out to Lacy and Reen for further details, but I know it's not a great situation to. We're not making much money off of the work that you would all do. So I wanted to just give a quick update, um we had nine applicants in round three, interviewed seven. We were very blessed, Lacy and James helped me with um an amalgam of different types of applicants from five college degrees to two college degrees to locals that will live here forever, so it's been a long weekend to process. I have it narrowed down to three applicants. Of course, I need three employees and I have to decide how many I can train at once and continue to be the current assessor, so that can be a challenge. The the top applicant, I would like to not mention names because I feel that's confidential. I went over and spoke to our auditor, currently I have per hour $18.67 in my budget for an appraiser, which is per state standard is pretty low, but that's better than what we start them out at, which is, and Shayla would like to look at this, I just brought a copy. We start our appraisers out at 1555 per hour and my goal is to submit an offer letter at 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 least a step five. Um, I spoke to Reen and that would still be under my current budget. I do not feel we're going to be retaining these top two to three applicants at the 1555. Most counties start between 17 and 20 dollars per hour. I know that we can't change that, um I'm, that's not an insult, I'm just, we we, we really need to retain people to stay in our community. And this particular applicant is a current college graduate who's making her home here with her fiance.
Does live here now, does live here.
Yes, she does.
I I have to say Lori got amazing applicant. It was a nice process to sit through.
Yes, and I was. I was hoping in that process that maybe um the other departments might see somebody that might inspire them as well. You know, and that's why I invited both James and Lacy for their feedback and for their view, but that that is my goal. Um, I, it's not something that that I believe has to be approved, I wanted to extend the courtesy to you all as a communication. So with that said.
So you're not very far out from making a decision and.
Oh, I've already had the decision made, but I did not want to put the offer letter on the table without providing the courtesy to you all as our leaders.
Um, do we need to? Was that? I have to have a salary resolution, even if it's in my budget now, even if I have. Should bring them in at a higher rate.
Well, then I'll put the offer letter out and we'll see if she accepts and I'll put it on the next agenda.
So, and so that's one, one position.
That is the position that would, I would request as your current assessor to become dual certified. I'm the only appraiser on your team currently that is dual certified in both real and personal and we need to move forward with dual certification.
And then do you have a second candidate?
I have three in mind, but if this isn't approved, then I may have to be doing some restructuring. So I have three, there are top, there's actually a top four, it's been a real struggle and a long weekend, as I said.
So when will you be able to have somebody on staff if this is accepted, if they accept the offer?
Well, I I don't know how long the applicant would want to give notice to her current employer. She's currently a commuter and she has quite a nice job in the Fallon area at this time, but does not want to be a commuter. The other, the other person is is local and then there's a debate between, yeah, it's just been a real challenge, they were great applicants. I don't, I don't even know how to explain it without, you know, I can't.
I'm glad.
Yes, it was a blessing. The contract employees from Story County are still assisting, I drove them in more declarations and real property appraisals on Sunday. I met them out, one of them out in Spanish Springs and delivered a truckload, if you will. Um, in reference to maps, I have reached out to Mr. Armstrong for guidance. It's not my place to ask for minimum requirements, I know some assessors will not process a map without the owner's signature, the parcel number ID, um some, some details. I have five maps pending to include the Unionville Cemetery that currently are all called records of surveys, which in my self-taught opinion, at least three of them are not. There's no parcel identifiers, there's no signatures from owners. In the case of the Unionville Cemetery, it definitely looks like a parcel map to me, so that is why those maps have been not complete. I emailed him, I think, maybe 10 days ago, he will get back to me, but I didn't want you all to think that that had gone on the wayside. Um, I'm hoping that maybe the county can establish, I don't know how that would be done, if that would be a planning commission, a DA, a you all sort of thing. But when there's no identifiers or even the legal owners do not match, I mean, I I I backed into them and did the legal descriptions myself, but that's not 100% confirmed, I'm not a mapper or a surveyor. So I'm having some real struggles with the maps that have been recorded. So I'm waiting for Mr. Armstrong to share his feedback. And the last update I have is we have the Board of Equalization next Tuesday, am I correct Lacy? The days are all mushed together here and we had two appellants and we have two stipulated value agreements. So it should be a rather quick meeting.
Good.
Yes, and then in reference to your inquiry, I spent about two hours on the phone last night, I have a help desk ticket in Justin. His emails will not come to me in inbound and then until I have further information, Carol, I'd maybe rather not talk about that openly.
Yeah, I know.
It was a, it was a very productive conversation, he was a very nice gentleman to speak to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do you have any questions for me? No?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Good job, thank you. Bryce Shields.
I don't have anything.
Ask him. Cherry Allen, you're up. Morning.
Morning. Uh, been a busy week for us, I think we've had 12 bookings, two leases, so we're up to 17.
Oh geez.
In the jail right now, uh pulled the district court upstairs right now. Our new dispatch trainee should be starting tomorrow morning, so that'll be good, get that training completed prior to our next retiree leaving.
Yeah.
So and then the other, only other thing I had on there was the resolutions, I moved one of my dispatchers to the front office. She will be however, a backup dispatcher too, should we need her, so. There was no. There was no. Equivalent moving from the dispatch pay grade to the administrative pay grade, so. The closest I could get was.
So it's kind of a wash?
It's like twelve cents, I believe.
Uh, I thought it was, you know, from a twenty-seven five to a twenty-six seven.
Yeah, it's, it's as close as I can get moving from the dispatch pay scale to the administrative scale.
Yeah.
But she will still be a backup dispatcher as well.
That's good.
She'll be dual duty should we need her.
If she's dispatching, will she be paid at a higher rate?
No, it'll be the same.
It'll be the same.
Cause she's actually gonna get a little bit of a raise moving to the admin office.
Oh, okay, I, I got it, okay.
Moving positions.
I have motion for the resolution.
I'll move to approve the salary resolution. The employee.
Okay, and I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for approval, all those in favor? Aye, motion passed.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Wow.
You might as well just stay right there. So, uh, number six is upgrade and approval. So we didn't have a ten. Update, uh, progress on the site location, design, funding, amenities and construction of a future law enforcement center. And there's several things on here uh, for approval. Let me start with one is uh, LCA was our architect of choice. We did have uh. Our contact, an architect in the local office of LCA. In many conversations I've had in the last couple of weeks and yesterday, that individual moved to Texas. And. Yeah, yeah, no, not a good place right now. Uh, at any rate, so LCA closed their local office. And I've talked three times with uh, the LCA people in Boise. They uh, will come down here when we're ready, after we do our, uh, finish up some more uh, design stuff. They will come down here and meet with us and, and go for what we've done and changes and fit the lot. They are currently uh, doing, I thought this was kind of interesting. A new jail or detention center and a new courthouse in Ely. And uh, they're doing that by bond, not a USDA loan. So it's something we should look into. Anyway, so we just need to have a sit down and invite your partner back there.
Okay.
Go over some stuff. So we'll do that.
And I've seen the plans and the actual construction of the building in White Line.
You have?
Yeah, they were, uh, last November I was there, they were trying to close it before the snow flew.
Yeah.
Are they replacing their district court? Or is it just justice court?
You know, I'm not sure, I believe it's all of the courts they're putting in there. Uh, and then the new building is gonna be the jail and they're gonna take their old building and that'll be the administrative portion of the insurance office. But they're building their, their jail right behind.
And then the new jail is eighty heads, whereas it's forty.
So as we get closer.
When you guys sit down and talk about it, are you going to discuss whether the justice court should be?
You know, we are gonna talk about that and from what Karen said the one time, but she didn't. Want to move right there, right? So, I mean, and we had it in the plan last time to have it uh, by video. So at least we can do that and we would have a room set up for that.
Yeah, moving the, to the twentieth century to have the video arraignment at least is one of the.
Just for the arraignment.
In the two plans we have, that, that, that already exists in those plans, so. What if we need to expand it to include anything else, I'm sure at this stage it's better to do a thousand.
Yes.
Well, the, the. The jury room or the courtroom for a justice court is so tiny.
It is.
And.
So maybe we end up having another discussion with the judge and see if.
But it's not just up to the judge, it's us, up to us is thinking in the future as well.
Right.
And um, and I, I'm not discounting.
An investment.
It should be made one time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Keep in mind the expansion opportunities.
Now's the opportunity.
Yes. And I'd, I'd like to see, you know, as you, you've come up with what you have in mind, I mean, we need to see it, Shayla needs to see. For sure, and I, it's been so long.
Right.
And I know things will be changing.
So I downloaded a program on my, on my tablet that I'm gonna try and take the, the final design that we had a couple of years ago. And see if I can digitize that and then make it easier, cause Commissioner Rackley and I, um, the time before that, we were, we went back to kindergarten, we were cutting and pasting.
Yeah, we did too.
Uh, hopefully we could move that up a little bit and get an actual visual.
Yeah.
Take a look at it. There's gonna have to be some big discussions because as Bryce said, there's, this is a huge investment for the county and we have to make it last. But there's gotta be other people involved as well too, cause there's gonna be certain things that people see differently that maybe we don't see that way.
Yeah, the more eyes on it, the better.
Yep. Yeah, I don't wanna build a building and then go into a eight hundred thousand dollar renovation the week that it opens.
You won't pay. So, Mr. Chair, I put on there about the financial and funding portion of this because. I don't know about anyone else, but I don't feel competent enough to figure out how or what we should be doing and as far as. Financing this, whether we should go USDA, whether we should go bond, whether we should do something else. I, I know that last time we had Sherman and Howard come and we had representatives from USDA. And then Lacy checked with banks on their rates, but I'm, I'm not a financial wizard here. And I don't know whether or not Rine is comfortable doing all this and Lacy and Karen, or if. If we need to maybe see if there's someone out there that has gone through all this that might be able to help us. And I have not contacted anyone.
Yeah, last week I spoke with John Baker, he was our government person when we did the loans for. Fire trucks. He, I talked to him about the projects that road department wants to do. But he suggested looking into a municipal planner or financial planner for projects that large and he did give me one name, so I, I was gonna reach out to them to see. What they offered, you know, I've never, I've never. Talked with one or, so that, I mean, that's.
But I think it's important that we get some expertise in here because. Again, it's, it's a huge project, we only have this one opportunity. We want a minimal effect on the taxpayers and everyone else, but I don't know what, how to do this. And um, I was also thinking of a possible for, a former finance person for another county that's retired. That's gone through all this too, but I'm not putting that name forward, I'm just saying, we need some expertise. Or at least that's my feeling, but I put it on there so I can hear what you guys think.
Colonel Lady in Windermuccia that was familiar with that process.
I know that we had bond counsel. That helped out with some of the municipal bonds that the county had acquired for some of the big projects, but. I would be interested in getting the opinion of the municipal financial planner. Because I'm sure that person could probably tell us all or provide that expertise so that.
At least the differences.
Yeah, whether we're gonna get bond or.
Yeah.
Yeah. Through the USDA.
And if we went USDA, they have to be involved from the very beginning in order to do it properly.
Oh, yeah.
And so.
Yeah, that's the decision that's made.
Yeah. And um, you know, like Churchill County, they put in a new jail, how did they pay for theirs? So, I, you know, again, I, I don't know and I don't have the expertise and. At this point in my life, I don't wanna learn that much about this.
Be a consultant down in retirement.
Yeah, sure. I wanna have fun in my retirement.
So, I don't know where we start to come up with that, Lacy, if somebody you did talk to. Is that a good place to start?
I think so, yeah, I, I spoke with Nevada State Bank, but he gave me a name of a municipal financial planner. And that was on a two million dollar project, so you know, for months.
Yeah.
Retained that much, so I, I'll reach out to them, try to get some information or ask them if they can come to a meeting.
Okay.
Good.
That would be great, and then if, if we decide we need to hear from USDA or Sherman and Howard or whatever, we can do that, but. We need to have those ducks in a row. Yes, did, Rine, did you have any questions or thoughts on this?
I don't have the knowledge to do it.
I, yeah. I, none of us do, it's huge.
Okay, another thing on there is approval for Desert Mountain Surveying to do a survey of the parcels. One thing we don't have is property corners, so we don't really know for sure. In talking with John Milton a couple of times. He, he gave us a price of like, uh, a, a high side of seventeen hundred dollars to do the survey, to come up with property corners. But then in further talking to him, uh, when you. Let's say in. I'll even give you my house example, I had two different acres and I built on the middle of. So I had to do a conversion to acreage or reversion acreage. And Lori, chime in when I, when I mess up here, but. So I'm, I'm looking at this parcel map and there's two lots, of course, that we purchased, so we have to do something there. And, and Lori and I talked, so we have to do something, but John brought up yesterday. That also on these two parcels, at one time. There was one, two, three, six different parcels at one time. Looks like. Several of them were combined in to make one. So he's, has to look at what he, what does he have to do since it's in the city block. Uh, to combine all these, so he's doing that now. He indicated he was going to uh. Talk with the city lawyer, uh, city attorney and to get his thoughts on what we have to do to combine them all. So, anyway, we need to. Yep.
Are you gonna come to six different lots or six different parcels?
Well, see, there's only two parcels.
ID numbers.
But then there's all those other lines in there that had parcels before or lots before.
Well, parcels can have several different lots, but I'm unaware of it having six separate parcel numbers.
It doesn't, it doesn't, and it does not.
Okay.
Yeah, it does not. It just, it just has those separate lots and uh, you guys can see this.
Yeah, I remember that.
But, anyway, John's looking into it to see what we have to do.
It sounds like the reversion acreage, but again, I'm just self-taught.
Yeah.
And then wouldn't he have to redo a parcel map as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
For, for.
That would be part of what John would do.
A new parcel assignment, the two um, parcel numbers will be. Deleted or killed is the word in our new system, and then the new, they call it, the new parent parcel will be assigned. So a new APN will be assigned and they, the system tracks the order of numbers, so I have no control over what number will be picked.
Yeah.
On that page or the new map will have to be created.
So I think what we need to do.
As far as that process goes, it's gonna go through the planning commission. That's the proper order. And then it's approved either by, it's gonna be approved by the city council, but it should be initiated with the planning commission.
Okay.
The city council has gotten away from using the planning commission for some reason, I don't know, I don't know why they've gone that route. But a lot of these initial simple uh, requests to combine acreage or to revert back to acreage.
Yeah.
They should all be done eventually, so that's what I'm going to advise John to do. Regardless of what the city attorney says.
Regardless.
Cause that's where it should go.
So, but, to me, to do anything, we gotta start where we can see property corners. Cause there's this one, one I parked in here and there's a jog in the property line and, so he's gotta determine.
Well, there's that alleyway or whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's this piece, of course, doesn't go through, cause somebody else owns that lot.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Does the peo, do the people on the corner own that lot?
Yep.
Ah, okay. Right up to the building then.
Yeah, that's where we wanna have property and property survey to see where we're at.
Is on my property one. Yeah, did my building. Mr. D, were you saying that each of those two channels, the, the planning commission? I appreciate that because I feel that the maps that I'm sitting on often are called record of survey, which you told me in the past, Bryce. They, they escape that process and then I am stuck with these maps that I'm afraid to do, to be quite honestly, I believe, so. I support that, I always appreciate that you're pushing for that process. Puts me in a very bad situation sometimes.
So, Mr. Chair, do you want a motion to approve going forward with Desert Mountain Survey?
To do a survey.
To do a survey of the parcels and see where we are at, and we don't know the exact amount now, but it'll be what it is.
He's got a limit of seventeen hundred for, for that part.
Right.
The rest of what, what has to be done, we don't know.
So I'll make that motion.
Hold a second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of a survey, all those in favor? Aye, motion passed. Okay, the next thing on there, and I've talked with uh, Dan on both of these, is for the road department. To cut down the trees on the, on the two lots. Which is eight twenty-five and eight forty-five, I think, Cornell. Next to the little blue house thing. So they can do that in sometime when they have a blank spot.
Are they going to charge, backcharge us for doing that?
We didn't talk about that.
Well, the reason I ask is, I mean, if, would they backcharge us more than the five thousand then?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Well, that's.
What they're gonna do, road department's gonna cut down the trees and their employees will dig the firewood home.
Okay.
So we're not gonna have to pay five thousand dollars, right?
Or.
And no. That was not mentioned one bit.
Okay, and then are they gonna dig up the stumps or, I don't even know if you can dig up the stumps, I mean.
I think at one point in time when they get bigger piece of equipment in there, then the stumps will come out. But the main thing right now is let's get the trees out of there.
Okay, and that's all the trees, right?
That's all the trees.
Yeah. It'll look so much better.
Yeah, and then I'll fill it, the next thing is electric, so I'll tell you about that too.
So, um, what?
I have a question real quick. The property you're talking about, have we taken ownership to that?
No, because we're waiting on the title report from Western Title and I spoke to them and they're really slammed, but I spoke with Ed Griffith. And we have a purchase agreement for the property. I don't anticipate any title issues whatsoever with this lot, it's, I mean, it's.
I just wanted to know.
I could go over and I could probably do the research myself and, you know, say, hey, we're good. But when we're purchasing property for the county, especially property that we're gonna put a significant building on, I want a title insurance policy. Just to be absolutely safe. And we're waiting for them to issue it, but I spoke with Ed this morning and I told him, hey, on the, on the agenda today, there's an item to cut trees down on the lot and Ed said, yeah, go ahead. So.
Just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you brought it up, but yeah, I talked to him and we're good. He's not gonna call the sheriff's office for trespassing.
Yeah, and, and, and there again, this isn't something we're gonna do tomorrow, it's something we can wait until, wait until we get that. I just wanna have approval so we're ready to go.
And then what about the house that's on there?
It's moved.
The, well, the shed's moved.
Not the, the house.
But the house, first we're gonna have a discussion with the fire department to see if they wanna use it for training.
For control.
They can't do it for fire training, I'm told, but, but they could have some other kind of training, so we'll go that route first.
Okay, so would you like a motion to approve the road department?
Yes.
To have authorization to remove the trees?
Yes.
From those two parcels, I'll make that motion.
Yes. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
The other part of that is, what hap, has to happen before we do the trees is the electric line, so. I'm asking for approval, I'll contact MB Energy to have the service lines not only disconnected but removed. And, and I say lines, cause there's two. One feeds the little blue house and the other one feeds. The sign that hasn't been lit up in probably thirty years.
Can you fix it for a little while, the previous owner of the windmill?
Did they?
Can you fix it, yeah?
Anyway, to get rid of both of those service drops and, so they're out there.
So I'll make that motion. So I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, motion pass.
So that sign's coming down eventually, right?
Well, that was going to be my question. Does that sign belong to whoever owns the windmill? Is that their property and then they, did they just have?
It's not windmill, so it's that motel. Yeah, yeah.
Is it their property and is it, I mean?
It may be their property. We can take it to them. Yeah.
I just thought if there was previous maintenance or anything like that or.
What sign? Huh? There's a sign that's on the corner.
It's right outside the.
Between two lots. And it's got a sp, electric service drop to it, which isn't active, but it's for that motel. I mean, it's on, it isn't even on their property, but.
Yeah, they probably have it. It's called Eastman and Gross.
Yes.
I'll ask that about it too.
Okay. Well, it's not on his property. It's on the next one. It's on the other one.
It's the one we thought a long time ago.
Borderline between our two lots.
So it's on our property?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I'll have to look into that. That's interesting.
Yeah.
There's current owners of the current wagon site. I don't know.
Right, yeah, because it was a owner prior to that. He got in there, shopped himself, probably was repairing it.
Oh, yeah.
And isn't it closed? Isn't the covered wagon closed?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay, number seven, proclamation and awards. Anything? Thank you, Chair. Hearing none, moving on to number eight, Tulon Peak.
I've not had the opportunity to speak with Jesse Katsaris, but I will continue to try.
I have talked to him. What'd he say? Well, kind of told us we were all wet, but when it really gets down to it, to my surprise, he didn't have an issue with
This is the last.
buying and installing cameras at his expense, which is over a thousand dollars, and giving them to the county. I think he's wrong in doing that. But then he followed that up with, when I told him that there was some input about doing or charging a, a fee for him to be on, you know, on our property. He said, let me get this straight. You want me to provide you cameras and install them? And now you want to charge me to be there?
No.
No.
No, the county has the cameras. John said the county has the cameras to put in there. The county can provide the cameras. The, that was not the issue. We don't want Jesse to provide the cameras. But Jesse, if he wants to put an equipment on that tower, then he ought to pay a fee to the county for leasing, a leasing fee for that top.
And that's what we discussed last time.
Yeah, and I still think it's wrong, so.
If, if we were to provide that service to him free, then we'd have to provide that service to every single internet provider and probably anybody else that would want to put something up on that tower. Eventually, the whole thing would fall down because of the fall. And Justin also made the remark last time that we would probably be getting more interest from other internet providers in the future with broadband and stuff coming in.
I would, because I'm bringing high speed down and I'm putting, but I'm having to pay wherever I put equipment up. I have to pay. So the company I'm, I'm joining forces with has to pay.
What, what do you pay about? Just give me a rough idea.
Um, well, it depends. Like, the first place we're working with, they're, we're treating services with them. So we're providing fiber to them and then they're going to pay some for the fiber work. They're getting a hundred meg circuit for half the price. So, something like that, but they are charging us. And wherever you go, if people are going to charge you for their stuff up or trade services, you know, they get internet. So it seems like I don't want them giving you internet.
Yeah. So I don't know what an annual rate, a, a reasonable annual rate would be. But if he was going to provide cameras for a thousand dollars, you know, I don't know if five hundred a year or a thousand a year or a hundred a year. I mean, I don't know what the rate is, but we need to do some reason. I'm sorry.
I can find out a rate.
I would.
I'm just new with this, uh, joining forces with this new company, so I can find out what they, what people charge them.
Okay, that would be awesome because I have no idea what a rate would be, you know, a reasonable rate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that would be awesome, Amanda. Thank you.
Somebody was voting on last week not to do, Jesse, right? Mr. Rappi, did you, you seconded that motion that the equipment wasn't to be?
No, it was that we reach out to Jesse and we renegotiate.
There, there was no approval last time.
Okay.
It was, it was what Shayla was saying and that the DA was going to reach out to the individual to discuss.
Yeah, okay. So it just changed that Jesse wanted to jump in this time instead, right? But you discussed last time not to.
We don't have an agreement with them.
Okay.
That's basically what it is, so. But Amanda, thank you. I, that would be great information to have.
So are you going to act on that or postpone it?
Well, we can't act on it because we don't know what, and we don't have an agreement.
Okay, next one up is Grass Valley Advisory Board. We've already had that report. And then after that's Derby Field Airport. I reported about the gate. The other thing, there's one other thing coming up. I got this email yesterday. And it's, if you remember, we got a CARES Act, I guess you would call it, grant for twenty thousand dollars to work, to do for maintenance type work at the airport. There's a question about, we spent three thousand something for Fuel Island and so far it hasn't been charged to the grant, so we have to work on that. But now I get another one and they are actually, they being the FAA and the federal government, have another, another round of funding for the same type of purpose, which will be out soon. And that's going to be for nine thousand dollars. So we have another nine thousand dollars coming forward. Airport, it's on here. This is the list of all the airports in Nevada and the country. But anyway, nine thousand's coming our way to do more.
So about twenty-six thousand or so. So what can we use it for?
Well, there's several things. And well, one of them, we've already discussed and approved is the road department's going to tear down that building that should have been torn down twenty years ago. That's, it was the old Beacon facility that had all the electric and that and stuff. It's been abandoned for many, many, many years. So we're going to tear that down, get it out of there just to make it look better. And then they'll do some dirt work around there also. But I'll get with John. Now, and another thing we can do and you know, Armstrong has brought it up once or twice, is some improvements to the runway lighting. I have no idea what cost that's going to be, but it may be something we can entertain. Another thing that, that can fall under this with that new gate is to put a light on it, like a solar lights that would shine on where the keypad is. So at nighttime, at least, maybe they can see the keypad issue and also. Pardon me?
The keypad's not eliminated?
No. And then, so that'll light it up and also a camera or two.
Is there, if we're putting a solar light on it, is there a building that will block the sun from recharging that light?
No. If that, it'll be at the gate. There's no buildings there.
Oh. Bruce is going to take me out this weekend to see the airport.
What's that?
Bruce is going to take me out to see the airport. I've never been back there.
Oh, you've never been to the airport?
Do you have the code to get in?
Bruce does.
Yes, he does have a guide. I gave him the code.
So what I was going to ask was on future agendas, could we put Derby Field Airport and Tulon Peak under buildings and grounds so that John is here to discuss these and hear these things as well?
John needs to be here to hear these.
Yeah, and we can do that.
Especially with the problem with the gate yesterday and, and him not knowing how to reset it and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think it, it would be a good idea. That way you can hear the discussions too.
Yeah, um, as for Tulon Peak, I guess I shouldn't talk about that now. Wait.
We already.
Yeah, but I'll bring it up. It was my understanding that, that years ago Jeff used to work on it when you were.
The what?
Jeff, who used to work on Tulon Peak?
Jeff Campbell.
Jeff Campbell.
Oh, years ago, he was Jeff.
And since then, we have Norm doing it now, right? If Norm went to do it.
Between myself and Norm. I, I, I took over what, what Campbell was doing.
The electronics part of it?
Yeah. And then when I can't do it, then Norm is called to come in. Right now, we have, and I will, I'll report on that later. We have an issue with one of the channels.
I heard that there are several channels out. I got a phone call.
There's one channel out. Oh, there's two channels out. Oh, one of them is channel five of which they are trying to get parts. It's the signal before it ever comes to Tulon Peak. And then channel eight, we have an issue again, so. And I tried to go up there Sunday and you can't get there from here. I don't have a smokehead.
I just wanted to say on that grant funding, it's not money that we actually have. We have to request reimbursement.
Right.
So I have to have backup to submit in order for us to get them. So that's why it hasn't been charged to the grant.
Yeah.
And I, I didn't talk, I didn't tell her enough.
Oh, okay, good. I just was wondering what else we could do with the funding because I don't want it not to be used.
And we have four years to spend it, so.
Oh, okay.
Four years?
Yeah. So it's not like it has to be spent this year. Now, whether the new one says the same thing, I'm assuming it will. But the one that we did get, the twenty thousand, does say we have four years to, to spend.
So there is an airport board, right?
Yes.
And what is, what does the board think that the airport needs now?
I don't know. We have, we, you know, we talked about it at once and the main thing we talked about was tearing down that, that building. But as far as what else to do, haven't, what I, what I'd like to do, and I, and I told Hugh Montrose, who was the chairman of that board, is that we'll have a, we'll have a field trip with, with John and Hugh and also Walter, who was on the board, so two members of the board can be there and discuss this very same thing. What, what can we do? So we'll see.
Um, talk about people that use our airport.
That use it?
Yeah. Crop dusters, right?
That's two of them. Hugh Montrose and Walter Brinkler. And then the, the crop duster that comes out of Orvada.
Maybe he should be included on, on his thoughts maybe on what it can be improved at our airport.
You can ask him. And I, I know him too.
And then did your board talk about the hanger agreement or, or is it up to Bryce now for the hanger agreement?
That's up to Bryce.
Okay, all right, because I'll, we, we need to remind him when he gets back because we need to get that approved too.
Number eleven, Planning and Building Department. Approval to advertise, hire a planning technician position due to a resignation. I think we all know what's going on there, so we just need approval to.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and advertise and hire a planning technician.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion pass. I think we'll wait till Bryce comes back for number twelve. CARES funding, do you want to explain that one?
Last time we approved in a stipend for Tyson McBride and Dr. Van Gilder. And in the meantime, I spoke to our emergency operations individual and it was felt by myself and that person as well that the work they're doing really should be incre, the amount should be increased and I should have checked with them first, but I didn't do that. And it's up to this board, but what I'm asking for right now is if we could increase Dr. Van Gilder's stipend from five hundred a month to seven fifty and Tyson's from two hundred to three hundred. This goes from January first to June thirtieth, which I'm hoping by that time we're over this COVID thing and it would come under the, the CARES Act. And, okay, that's the first one, so I, it's, it's all.
Make a motion to approve the increase in the stipend for Dr. Van Gilder and for Tyson McBride.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion pass.
And then the other thing was, we already approved the, the wiring under that. Oh, we, we approved going forward last meeting with the Emergency Operations Center at the community center and the equipment and things that they needed would not cost more than a thousand dollars. But it, this is on the agenda so that we can take it out of the CARES funding. Because we didn't have it on the agenda that we could take it out of the CARES funding. And so that's why it's on here this time. So I would make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then on the electrical, we already approved that. And I believe we, we approved it to come out of CARES, didn't we, when we did the motion? Lacy? Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we take that out of the CARES funding as well, just in case.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye, and a, and a.
Motion pass.
Abstention?
Abstention.
The what?
Abstention, I can hardly say it.
Oh. Litigation?
No, not legal litigation.
Report from legal counsel?
Uh, did you guys already talk about the ordinance?
Oh, we need to go back to that because you weren't here.
Okay, sorry. I got pulled out by.
Yeah, let's go back to that then. First reading of proposed ordinance amended in chapter one oh eight of the Virgin County Development Code.
All right, so this is the, this is the amendment to the Development Code, chapter one oh eight of the Development Code that deals with that AP overlay district. The language that is changing is supposed to be highlighted in yellow, but it's not. And because it's not, I'm giving it a color now. But you'll see. So just pretend, yeah, that that dark, well, that dark language is yellow. Okay. These are conditions that I came up with that the board would have to consider. And you'll notice the language without limitation. And so there are other conditions that the planning commission can consider before it issues a special use permit. But these were just my initial thoughts and I want the board to take a look at them. And I, I, I hope that we can get input from a broad array of stakeholders on this issue. I'd like to hear from S-Power. I'd like to hear from farmers that own land in the AP. One of the things, number three, that I threw in there is that the grantee of a special use permit and the owner of the real property for which the special use permit is issued shall agree not to transfer water beyond the boundaries of the AP overlay district during the term of the special use permit. So that would pertain obviously to a lease situation where you have a solar development company coming in and leasing property from a landowner. During that time period, the landowner cannot transfer water rights from the AP district. It also, that would also apply if it's a sale. So if S-Corp or let's just say S-Power comes in and they buy property from a landowner in the AP and that landowner includes water rights, they can't transfer those water rights out of the act reserve. They have to transfer those water rights to another producer within the AP district. So it keeps all the water rights within that area. And then one issue that I'm, I'm really interested in getting input on is the amount of the reclamation bond. This ten thousand dollars is what the federal government charges solar development companies when they get a lease to put up solar development on public land. And so the reclamation bond is ten thousand dollars per disturbed acre. And if it's good enough for public land, then it ought to be good enough for land in the act preserve. Now that bond, if, you know, technically it goes, the bond would be made out. Persian County would be the beneficiary of the bond. Because ultimately, if a power company went bankrupt and left these solar arrays on 500 acres of act preserve land and couldn't do it, the county would have to step in and have to take care of that. The county would be using that bond, so.
I think it's a good idea that we would have a workshop or whatever to allow the farmers to come in and do input. I've had two phone calls since they saw this on the agenda. And the way one put it is just, okay, what are you guys trying to do to us now? So at least that way you can, we can explain.
Sure, yeah, and, and, and get more input because.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sure there are differing opinions as to what's going on.
So you want us to go ahead and introduce it at this time?
Yeah, this will be the first reading and then it'll run in the newspaper. Um, maybe, maybe we ought to have a workshop in between now and when it's approved.
So at least they know what.
Yeah.
What's going on.
Yeah.
They, they were, the one call I have, uh, that made that comment was, uh, he was afraid that we were just arbitrarily taking away act preserve, the preservation.
So what is the bill?
Three, four, six.
So I'll go ahead and introduce bill number three, four, six, which is an ordinance amending chapter 108 of the Persian County Development Code by amending the provisions of 17.108.25 to authorize solar energy development in the agricultural preservation overlay district with a special use permit and other matters properly relating thereto.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second, oh, we don't need. Good?
Yep.
The administrative assistant, Karen?
Oh, I'm not, we, you asked for legal counsel, but then we went back to this item.
Oh, yes.
I saw that Carmen Turillis was in attendance today. And I was hoping that she would be here during the discussion on the windmill property. So Ms. Turillis is claiming that she is a tenant and has been a tenant of that property for a year. Uh, that changes the county's approach and that changes the obligations to her if she isn't a tenant. Ms. Turillis's plan, uh, was to move into the hotel that burned down on Friday.
Yeah.
And there's not a lot of housing and, uh, there's not a lot, a lot of addictions going on to create housing opportunities because of the pandemic. So Ms. Turillis is asking that she be allowed to stay until April 15. And, uh, there's a couple of issues with that. My, the, my primary concern is the board's attorney is ensuring that the county gets possession of the property. We have ownership, but we don't have possession because someone's living on it. So if they would give us possession of the property, that would allow us easily to go ahead and do a survey. It would allow us to backfill that big hole that's back there that was on the agenda. And we could do so without extending to them any rights and privileges that they would have as tenants. And we can go through the court process and get all of the orders that we need to, but maybe not act on those, on those orders. And allow them time to secure housing elsewhere and get moved out. Do you follow what I'm saying? So if you'll authorize me to go forward with the court process, but at the same time negotiating with them to surrender possession and allow the county to go in and do whatever it needs to do.
So they have to sign something?
We could do it that way, or I could just get a court order giving us possession through that writ of restitution that we talked about. I've been waiting for proof of service from the sheriff's office on the, uh, lawful detainer notice.
Three day.
Invited to them, yeah, the three day notice. And that came this morning. So now that I have that, I can file for a writ of restitution, I can file my complaint, uh, to get them evicted. Uh, but I do not want to enter into a situation where the county's saying, yes, go ahead and stay and you're going to pay us rent because then they become our tenants and then we're subject to the moratorium. Whereas now, whereas now we're not. We can evict them as the new owner of a property, evicting a former owner. And then the tenant process with the new owner after foreclosure sale does not apply to the governor's, does not fall under the governor's eviction moratorium. But I don't want to do anything that's going to put us under that.
No.
So if we just go forward and we work with Carmen and work with Mr. Harmer and just treat them like people and try not to make them homeless and just give them some time. But I'll still go through the court process. And then who knows how long the court process is going to take, okay? And then, uh, hopefully, you know, within 45 days or so, they'll have found a place to live. But in the meantime, the county will have possession, physical possession and ownership of the property. We can do with, we can do whatever we need to do on there.
It's the humane thing to do.
It's the, yeah, it's the right thing to do.
Now, by allowing them to stay though, it doesn't set any precedent or anything.
Well, and that's the thing, it's more of a, um, you guys are staying and we're going to go through the court process. And it's not like a formal agreement that we're allowing you to stay. It's, you guys need to be looking for a place and our attorney is going through the eviction process to remove you. And then if the attorney holds on to the paperwork for a little extra longer so that they don't get kicked out onto the streets, then sometimes things happen that way. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yep.
They're not liable if they were to hurt themselves.
That's why we don't want to enter into a formal agreement. Right now they're.
They're squatters.
They're squatters.
Oh, yeah, I'm just curious, like, how are they allowed to live in a building that's not so, for people to live there, yeah?
Well, that's a question that you'd have to ask the city. And I, I called them about that and they said, oh, yeah, we didn't know.
Oh, yeah, um, it's been that way.
It's, it's commercial and I think they can have one apartment, but they can't lease it to another person.
Yeah.
And that's my argument against Carmen being a tenant, okay? She's not a tenant, uh, but there's nowhere really for them to go and they've talked to me about it, what Carmen has and, uh, you know, we're not in the business of making people homeless and we don't technically need that property.
No.
Right away. And so if they are holdovers, I wouldn't even call them holdovers because that's a tenant term. If they're squatters and we're going through the court process to get them out, we're protected from, from that as long as we're going through the process. So I'll continue to do that with the understanding that they're going to be working towards finding a new place. And the signs, things like that. Carmen came to me yesterday and she said, she asked me to talk to the board and I told her I would. But if I drove by in the morning and the signs were still up, then I was going to go to court. And I didn't drive by because I took a different route. Are the signs still up?
They were the last time.
I didn't drive by.
I drove by, but I didn't notice.
Okay.
So maybe in the last day or so, they maybe.
Okay, we'll see.
Also, I have a question about insurance on the building. I guess because of the.
The fire.
Well, that too, but the, um, shut off, the electrical shut off master.
Yeah. So, um, are you asking whether we should get an insurance policy?
Do we need it, do?
Well, I think we should probably get a, a policy just covering liability and nothing for the building. Because we're going to tear that down. But, you know, just the same type of liability that they didn't ever have if someone trespassed on their property.
Once we have ownership, it will be included in our, our blanket policy that we have. We don't have to add it now.
Okay, perfect. So by virtue of the fact that now it's our property and we own it, it's covered.
So it's covered. Because, um, the, what had happened is, is, um, the SL Electric got a phone call from Indy Energy saying that they could not turn off the power at the master, when you turn it off?
At the main.
After windmill building?
The main, yes. And Bruce looked at it and there are three sub ones that you can turn it off. But, um, when Indy Energy had that, they would have had to have turned it off at the.
At the pole.
Yeah. But Bruce looked at it and it completely turned off the three sub acres. But, um.
So we're not ready to do that anyway, so.
Well, he has paid the power bill, so that's why it's the home.
Yeah.
And then water, we don't want.
So, um, Love Lock Menos Water District, he's delinquent on one of the accounts, he's paid up on the other. They gave him until the end of February to, uh, make all of the payments on the delinquent account. And if he doesn't, then they'll shut the water off. That's not our decision.
That's, yeah.
And that doesn't come back on the home?
No.
And the same with sewer, I don't know what tells you there. You know, a lot of times they'll actually go out and disconnect it at the curb, but. There's nothing going on. Because nobody's going to be paying that bill either.
Well, given the alternative, maybe we should pay the bill.
Maybe, and it's not that much, it's just, yeah.
I just don't want sewage and.
No, no, no. So if it comes to that, we should just.
Yeah.
Pay the bill, yeah. Karen, anything else?
Just trying to keep, uh, on top of the, um, bill draft. Right now I have 25 to 20 entries wanted, so it's taking a lot of time. And then I have, uh, a request for the approval for the fee increases for Jordan Walsh. These will be effective March 1st, uh, 2021. Her rate is going up from $290 an hour to, uh, 305. And then the mileage will, um, be increased to $140. And that's for travel outside of Reno Spark area.
What is the tr- the mileage now? Do you know? Or it was, what it was? So, I keep reading. I'll make a motion that we approve the increases for Jordan Walsh with Holland and Hart for our labor negotiations effective March 1st, 2021. The hourly rate to 305 and the mileage to 140 per hour.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Items for future agendas.
Guys, where are we on the hanger agreement? Nowhere.
Talk, no, we talked about this last week, we're just waiting for the airport board meeting.
Okay.
Or not last week, last commission.
Couple times ago.
Yes.
So when there's an airport board meeting, then, uh, they can look at the, uh, painter agreement and then make a recommendation to the board county commissioners to approve the agreement. But this, like I said before, as far as I'm concerned, the agreement is ready to go.
Yeah.
And then, um, the business license fee, we sent something to taxation. Have we heard any?
I have not heard anything back. I'll follow up on that with them.
I'm sorry, I should have asked offline, these are just things I've been thinking about.
I'm glad that you said something because out of sight, out of mind.
And then, um, Amanda Burrows brought up about the, um, the resolution that we passed. Does the board want to readdress it in our next meeting? I'm just asking. Anyway, if you do, then can let Karen know, but, um, yeah. And what I was thinking was, well, we have the 11 o'clock hearing, I'm just going to mention that when we get to that about some of that. Oh, the G29 bridge, I know that Heidi is always mentioning it to Lee Bonner and Endon. But should we put on our agenda next time to do a letter to Endon? When they came and did a presentation to us, they said they would get back to us.
Yeah.
And they, oh.
I think we should put it on the agenda.
They've done for the last five years.
Yeah, so what I'm asking is maybe we should put on our agenda to do a request to them saying, hey, where are you?
Yeah, they were extremely dismissive.
They were.
They were.
And I don't think they're doing anything, so I think they need.
They're building a bridge that was in not as good, bad a shape as.
Yes.
The other one.
Yeah.
Well, it's because they don't want to deal with the railroad.
Well, eventually they're going to have to deal with the railroad, they can't keep dwelling Persian County off. And so maybe we should do a letter weekly to get their attention.
It's not a bad idea.
So anyway, that's why I was thinking, if we could put that on the next agenda, please. And then, do, do, do. When we have our combined meeting, um, the 24th, that 25th, 24th?
26th.
25th, 27th, 25th. Um, you know, we have on our, there are the regular things about the agreements and everything like that. But I, one of the things we really need to talk about is the recycling center and how much the city's going to do and how it's we're going to do and if they want to take over the volunteers. And I need to talk to Reed, you know, get some facts before, but, um, that's something. And I don't know if there was something else. I mean, we have this issue with fire departments and ambulance all the time and we're not getting anywhere.
And I have something to say. So I talked about a general improvement district under chapter 318. If you're going to do a general improvement district for fire suppression or emergency services, if that GID is going to incorporate, is going, if an incorporated city is going to fall within the boundaries of that GID, you have to have the incorporated city's approval. So that's something that we could talk with Love Lock about to see if whether they would like to be a part of that general improvement district or not. And I think that it needs to be a part of the general improvement district. Otherwise, just in the, um, unincorporated areas of the county, it's probably not going to raise enough revenue to cover fire suppression services and emergency services. So you would probably have to have a GID that encompasses the whole county, including the city of Love Lock. And then you would run things out of Love Lock and then have little branch stations.
Under Grass Valley.
Yeah.
Right. And would that include ambulance as well or could it include?
It could, yeah.
Okay.
Do we? Do we add like the, the planning department in with this meeting or they should be going through the planning department?
I, yeah, I think that's something that, uh, we ought to ask the city why they're not using the planning commission.
Yeah.
A few different members of the planning commission have brought it up to me that the city is not, there's practically no city business in front of the planning commission.
And they have two new board members or council members at the city that probably aren't even aware of any of this.
Right.
I think, I think that was all that I had, hopefully. Scribbling notes.
Do we put, and then I ask that on the agenda?
Yes, it has. If, if we have an agreement.
An agreement.
And if we don't, then we don't need to put it. But as soon as Amanda gets information, I'll make sure that Bryce has it and Karen and they can, she can distribute it. I don't know if Amanda's, who she's going to contact, so.
Well, why don't we leave it off until Amanda gets back and so.
Yeah.
Know what a reasonable way would be.
I did have, ask Karen to put on the agenda for the joint meeting to, for discussion on abandonment of Ninth Street.
Oh, good.
Get that tied up and in the way, or at least being worked on.
Yeah, even though they agreed to it before to make sure that.
Yeah, but let's tie them down.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
Almost 11 o'clock.
You want me to talk about the legislative issues?
Yeah, you got two minutes.
Well, I'm going to talk fast and then you can hit me and I'll stop. So there's several proposals out there, legislation. One of them, I don't know if you've heard about, it's called the innovation zones.
Yeah.
You've heard about, have you heard about innovation zones?
Yeah, what a terrible idea.
It is, it's horrible.
It is.
Have you heard about it?
Yes.
Okay, good, so I don't need to explain it. There's other things that. There's other things that NACO is watching very carefully, um, because they aren't, it isn't good legislation at all. So I thought what I would do is, um, I'll send this to Karen for you guys, and then I'll make a couple of notes. I have another meeting Friday, we, we're having a phone meeting every Friday, and so I'll send an update through to Karen that she can distribute, just of the few things that we talked about. But I think it's important that we leave this on the agenda in case there's something that we need to take action, particularly about. Okay, I'm done, is it two minutes?
Okay, it's eleven o'clock, we have a public hearing regarding proposed projects for the CDBG COVID round two funding in an amount of thirty-nine thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars.
So, this was so that the public, if somebody has anything that they want to suggest, but one of the things that was brought up in public input was small businesses and the impact on small businesses and OSHA fines. I don't know if that's something that can go under this or not, and I, we have to do a little research, but I thought we could, we can check and see how we could help small businesses or businesses, and then if there's anything else that we can do. But I'm not really clear, uh, we've got thirty-nine thousand, how we can spend the money.
Yeah.
And I don't want it to not be spent, I'm like that, I don't like to not do it, but, um, I think I need clarification on how it can be used, more than what I've got, and I, I did look over the materials, but, you know, I'm still in a while. Is it Gene, is Gene still at CDBG, Gene? Who's in charge of CDBG funds now? I mean, who would I talk to about?
Call Jessica Sanders.
Jessica Sanders.
And her number is on that.
Okay, all right.
Because you have to put the application through the Zoom grants process.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. So we don't really have any?
No, no, but we have another, do we have another hearing or something? So I'll see what I can find out.
Yeah, I didn't see the scope of work, it wasn't attended, so maybe we should ask now. But other than that, it looked good. I mean, it's, but didn't come out, isn't it? Not a big deal if it come out.
Was the contract already signed?
Yeah. After you told me that, I filled the check to wake up to.
Yeah, I guess.
Did?
Coming out.
I know, I should have had it on the agenda. Matters of the board for discussion.
Who do you want to go first?
Go for it.
Correspondent.
Correspondents? Correspondents.
Oh, I skipped it, correspondence, no.
So we had a museum board meeting, and it was a great meeting, they're working on moving the blacksmith shop, um, that Core and BLM are involved in, and as soon as the weather gets a little bit better, they'll do the pad and everything. They have several projects outlined, and like I said, it was a good meeting and they've got a plan in place. Library board.
Can I add something to museum?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I had a, um, an email in the last couple of days, I had, I answered it yesterday. A year ago, maybe a little over that, the clampers put a plaque at the museum.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they have several of them, they wanna do another one, at first they were looking at putting out, uh, at Orianna somewhere, but property is an issue, so they wanna put another plaque at the museum, and I referred him to the board, so he can go to your board meeting.
So what's that plaque going to be for?
On, what is it, Montezuma?
Revenge.
No, not Montezuma's Revenge, Montezuma, which, that was a mining.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, anyways, about Montezuma and the Orianna area.
Oh, okay, all right. Library board, they were supposed to have a meeting, they have trouble getting a quorum, and that's one of the reasons why I was stressing to Kathy that she needed to be here, and we need to talk about getting our library reopened. Solid Waste or Recycling Advisory Board, I kind of reported on that already. The NACO National Conference is coming up, and usually just a couple of commissioners go, um, to Washington or wherever it's held, and this time it's going to be virtual, so we're all invited to attend if we're available, because it's several days and they'll have different workshops, and there will be no cost to us, so it's a good advantage if you have the time. And I gave everybody one of these, and Bryce, it's for staff too, so if there's anything that anybody wants to, to listen to. And then jail inspections, I think we need to do jail inspections again, and normally.
Yeah, I was, actually.
Seven-thirty or something.
Yeah, we talked about that a little bit, the next meeting, we can't because we have RTC before our meeting.
So could we do it the second meeting in March?
So we could do it the second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March.
Jail inspection?
Jail.
March seventeenth, the jail inspection.
Isn't that budgeted?
Oh, we have budgets, yeah, we meet at seven-thirty in the morning, is that gonna work for you? We do it before we come to the commission meeting.
Yeah, I'll have the kids schooled early that morning.
Okay, all right. Anyway, that's, that's all I have.
Shayla?
With, Community Center Dixie gave a report, um, Central Nevada Water Authority, uh, we had a Zoom call last Thursday, Friday. Nothing really going on there. My Humboldt River water is coming up on the twenty-third here in Love Lock. Jeff Duncan gave a call me about the Sunrise, Sunrise Mine, that we got somewhere out here. They were here several meetings ago, I think before I was swimming. Danny had met with them to do the roads, the road agreement. They had, um, protested their water, but Jeff and the water authority were going to approve it and move that along, so they have their water. Other than that, um, I, I haven't talked to James yet, but I ha, and this is probably more of a city. The last fire we had, um, really concerns me because I'm not sure, um, people hold the permits for that, where the permits are issued, but, and I don't know if the, fire's been investigated, um, caused, but, um, if it's unlicensed contractors, it's, this is becoming a common occurrence, especially for electrical.
They would have had to go through the city if they got permits.
Yeah.
And.
I, I contacted Rodney yesterday and left a message, asking him to call me to confirm whether the state fire marshal's office had been notified and invited to come out and investigate, I did not hear from him. So I'm gonna follow up at one when we meet with them, but that was my first question, because the state fire marshal should have been out.
Exactly.
Like.
Immediately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a mul, it was going to be turned into a multi-resident.
Yeah.
This is what worries me, when, how many people need to die before, before things straighten out?
Well, not only that, but it was so close to the Cadillac Inn, I think they had to evacuate some of their.
They did a great job on keeping that place.
Yeah, but I mean, it easily could have.
And then the two house fires that we have, you know, one within the day of each other, were both electrical fires. And one of them, the, the one, she's a teacher, he's the art teacher at the high school, they can't be even getting one renter in here to, to fix their property. So, maybe the city and county need to get together on where these inspections and stuff are going, and.
Was, was this fire by the owner of the building working on it?
I don't know.
I don't either. And it, and it's not the same person that was over here, or is over here?
No, no.
It's somebody, yeah?
Yeah, so, trying to find that out, but Shayla, so what, it sounds to me like you would like the city and the county to get together to make their, um, property inspections more robust, is that what you're saying?
Well, that, and, and make sure that, that the, the work is being done by licensed people, because even, even if nothing happens, if there's something that's not done correctly, which things are going around about a certain handyman, and things are getting followed through, then, he should be pulling building permits and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure if that's happening.
It's not, I don't.
But this is what, this is the dilemma that rural communities face right now. It's difficult to get a plumber out.
Correct.
Right.
So you get a handyman.
Right, so if, if we're going to start enforcing unlicensed contractors for doing work for people, and if you can't get a plumber to come out to fix your pipes or stop a leak within seventy-two hours, and then you get the handyman to do it, who's unlicensed, then if you're enforcing it against some one person, you have to enforce everything. You can't pick and choose, so I think that, you know, everybody just kind of looks and they think this is, I mean, this is what we're, this is what we're dealing with.
How else do you get stuff done?
You can't get a licensed contractor to come out right now.
Oh, I know.
Right, so, that's why I ended up building in addition to my house and fixing, but it was cool.
Yeah, you're contacting Phil, I mean, you're.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you can't selectively enforce that.
But how do we protect people?
Well, I don't know that unlicensed contractors are the cause of these fires, first off. I don't know who was working on the motel, that's yet to be determined. The two house fires, I don't know if an unlicensed contractor was working on that.
We don't know.
Right. Definitely the fire last November that tore up Main Street, that wasn't the fault of a licensed contractor.
No.
And then, you know, Todd Plimpton's other property that burnt down, that was faulty wiring that occurred. That's, if there is one that could be attributed to unlicensed contracting, perhaps that one. But I don't know if an unlicensed contractor even worked on it, or if wires just caused that fire. I do know that the other residential property, it was due to, it was due to faulty wiring, but those wires hadn't been worked on.
Well, I do know that in this county, there's a lot of knob and tube, which is really dangerous.
A lot of what?
Knob and tube, and teeth.
Not old wire. Yeah.
And that can cause a lot of issues.
Sure.
But I'm, I'm talking about HVAC, I'm talking about a lot of things that, that, it's like, and with inspections, it should be consistent, whether it's an owner builder, or whether it's a handyman, the handyman should be having inspections done on their work.
Well, that's.
And pulling permits.
Well, then that's, that's the issue then, is inspections.
And see, right now, we're not going out, the county's not going out and inspecting personally, it's more of a take a picture. Or if you're a licensed contractor, I accept what you do.
And then where do we go when, is James certified for commercial?
No.
Because we have the salmon farm coming in, we have the truck stop coming in, we probably need to figure out a commercial inspector or something to do.
Yeah, we've talked, we've talked about that, when those buildings, when we're absolutely certain that that's going to occur, that we would probably have to contract out.
Really not, yeah.
A different inspector.
And would that be included in the permit fees and things too?
That's something we're gonna, yeah.
So, before he issues permits, see, right now, we talked about this, and nothing against our current, um, building and planning person at all, but we do not have the expertise in this tiny little county.
I agree.
To do what we should be doing.
Especially not for a building like that.
Yes.
Well, not, not to say to do what we should be doing, to do specialty jobs.
Okay, to do specialty jobs, thank you for correcting that, but for those.
Understanding that James has taken classes to know what to do on inspections, correct?
He should have a certification to go out and inspect these jobs, yeah.
Okay.
And we've encouraged him, and basically we've directed him to get those certifications, but he, he won't be able to get everything before some of these other projects start.
And I don't even think James would have time to keep on the salmon thing when it starts.
Yeah.
To be at the other end of the county.
Well, we've, you know, we've talked about this in the context of data forms, when Laurie came in with, uh, I can't remember, I think it was Story County with their assessor, and gave the presentation, they didn't have the expertise either to do, uh, twenty-four hour inspections on the data facilities, and so they had to contract out with a special person with that expertise. And I'm sure the county will have to do that as well, and we'll have to, we'll have to tell the salmon farm that this is what we're gonna be doing, but we're not going to pay for it. I mean, they're benefiting from it, so they should pay for it.
But do we need to direct James so that he doesn't issue permits without?
Yeah, I, I'm glad that Shayla brought it up, I think that we should probably start doing that now, rather than later, rather than, you know.
Get something at least lined up.
If they're due to break ground in June, we should get, get it lined up, have James start making those phone calls and find out who can do it for us, and how much they're gonna charge.
And then get it on our agenda.
And then start adding that into the fee structure, you know, specialty inspections are gonna be charged this much money.
So would you be able to discuss that?
Okay.
But we probably oughta, if, if, small commercial, James probably needs that certification, like the truck stop that's being built. We probably ought to send him or somebody to certify, be certified enough, because I don't think this is it for the county, I think it's gonna start.
Hopefully, I mean, it's a good problem to have, yeah.
But we have discussed with him about getting the certifications, but it needs to be, yeah, it needs to be pushed.
All right, I will, I will discuss that.
Follow up.
Okay. Anything else to add?
So on the CDBG, are we going to table that after, and so, so the board can learn a little bit more about it, or has been those thoughts?
We have another hearing that we have to do, so we can talk about it.
We have to have two public hearings, Bryce.
Okay, all right, thank you.
As far as, are you done Shayla?
Yes, thank you.
And, you know, I mentioned Channel Eight on, is out, so, you know, right now, we have our, our spare translator in, in place for Channel Eight, and now it's gone out too. So there's another frequency, something going on in that building, so Norm's aware of it, and, uh, we'll get up there as soon as the road permits. Senior Center, I, I mentioned that we're looking at, uh, March eighth for an opening, and I'll still tie that down, so that's not concrete yet. The reason, uh, March eighth was, was picked is, uh, Dr. Van Gilder was, uh, kind of waiting but worried that the senior population that attends that, by, by that weekend, the March sixth and seventh is the other shot pot, and most. And most seniors in our community will have their second shot by then. So the March eighth is the day after that.
Clara, just a question. I understand that, um, the second shot can make people pretty sick for a short time. And I just wondered, is there any place we can check on some of those seniors that are living by themselves? You know, make sure they're okay after that shot?
I, you know, you know, they were wa- really watching people this morning, uh, just to see if there was any reactions. I haven't heard whether, whether or not. But in talking to other people that have had the second shot, I mean, they, they had a sore arm and, and that fixed, yeah.
Um, I know somebody who had a second shot and it was somebody who actually had COVID. And, um, she got a lot of the same symptoms that she'd gotten while she had COVID and it lasted about five days. And, um, for me, I was far into the day right the shot, the first time I went to the gym. And, um, the second day, I had a horrible migraine lasting for three days and, and, you know, the list is, in fact, that's still in the system. Uh, we call it, um, problem for a new shot. So anyway, it is possible for people to be really sick and other people to not at all, so.
You know what, what, you know, a follow-up to that is today at the senior center, there, there's all, almost eighty people getting their second shot. So that, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it is.
Today. It, it started, uh, at seven thirty this morning. So they're, they're probably about wrapped up by now. Okay, approval of vouchers. Oh, I guess I better do public input first. Public input, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until this matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person.
I, I wanted, um, a couple of years ago, we can come closer. I was carefully at Torino and, um, on my way there, well, they don't carefully because you're healthy.
No. Yeah.
But on my way there, I saw on the side of a mountain, not in the rocky part at the top, but below, you know, it was still at a, at a slope. A face that looked like an Indian, like maybe a chief and a cougar. Uh, to be very big, like somebody had piled up some sand and, and drawn it out with a stick. You know, and you could tell it had been there for a long time because there was grasses and, you know, desert, deserty stuff.
Boy, you had a heck of a view out the window.
Well, even that, it she was, uh, hilarious.
Where can I get that?
Well, first appendix has to work.
Oh, never mind.
But, um, I, I just, and I've, I've asked a few people and nobody's ever heard of such a thing. And it's certainly possible I hallucinated, but I can't believe I'd waste a hallucination on, you know.
A, a cougar and a rock face.
Right, right. So I'm just saying, and, and it's possible it wasn't Purdon County, it could've been the next county. But if it is Purdon County, you know, and we find it.
Yeah.
Then, you know, it might be a draw. It might be of interest to people to come and study.
Have you asked the pilots whether they, they've seen that because I'm sure they fly, they fly that route every time.
Right. I did not. Um, I didn't add, I didn't bother anybody. But, um, wow, I can't remember who it was. Someone I talked to, um, there's a lot of things that I don't remember after that surgery around. Somebody said they had asked a pilot or it could've been one of the nurses, if they'd ever seen it and they said no, but they would, you know, watch for a bit.
Interesting.
It was interesting, you know, it was, it was a very simple drawing, um, but.
Was it really big or?
Yeah, it would've been pretty big. And it's something that you'd probably have to see from up high.
Uh huh.
You know, not driving down the road.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, and just, you know, it's our community of endless possibilities, so.
No, that's really cool. I wish we knew where it was.
Yeah.
Well, it's not gonna be me.
Yeah, no, not me either.
I'm not gonna be careful either.
No.
Maybe, um, I'm, I'm the only one with a helicopter, but, you know, it'd be really cool to find it and, um, to find out why it's there and.
So it was a face and a cougar?
Yeah, that's, that's what I saw.
Okay.
Interesting.
The cougar was coming down through like, like it was leaping.
Uh huh.
And, uh, the face was above it, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
So.
And you had to be, you were looking at like the mountainside, not the flat side.
Right. You know, it was, there, it wasn't in the rock, it wasn't carved out of rock, it was that olivial, you know, step that comes down from the mountain. And, um, but I thought it was really interesting to see it.
Yeah.
You know, we could.
Let's have Hugh Motros go and fly and see what he can do.
Yeah.
Or Walter Stokely? Um, I, I think he does.
Any public comments on some?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Amber.
Not that I'm seeing, but if the board wanted to, you know, cover my expenses, see if my powers, I think.
Oh, to go find that? Yeah, we should ask Rob to do it too. And his flying.
Okay, we are in recess for approval of vouchers.
I will make a motion to approve the vouchers, um, pulling out number five twenty-one to B S L.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second, I'll go to paper.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will make a motion to approve number five twenty-one to B S L.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. So we have a motion and a second, I'll go to paper.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're really in recess until one o'clock.
Okay.
We're closing up. You okay, Lacy?
Yep.
Uh, it's one o'clock, so this is a workshop with the, uh, Love Lock Fire Department and ambulance. And to discuss emergency medical service alternatives. Come on up.
Come on, Patty.
Yeah, you can come up.
Give him moral support.
Marty's not?
She is.
Oh, she is.
She's the volunteer.
Yep.
Okay, I guess everybody got their pack, huh?
Yes.
Okay. First thing I'd like to say is I'm really proud of the Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department for all the dedication and the time that they've put over the years. To, um, to take care of the ambulance service and the fire department.
Yeah.
Um, they've done a really good job, but I think what's happening now is it's come to the, to the part where we're having a hard time covering the, um, ambulance service. With the amount of calls that we're having. And that's kind of what our proposal is about. And, uh, I think you've seen the scenario, it's a lot of money. And, uh, um, what are your guys' thoughts about that?
That's the money's no option, best case, love, love, kiss, kiss scenario. There could be any version, any version of that.
You know, and Rodney, I think you already know my thoughts, but, uh, I'm all in favor of, of doing something like this. And, and being able to have a better coverage all the way around. I just don't know where the money comes from. That's the big thing.
Yeah, and I, I'm just really afraid it's gonna come to the point, we've, we've got a lot of people working out of town and stuff and then. And it's, we've got like about six people that are probably carrying the load right now. And we're getting to the point where it's getting to be a burned out.
Yeah, 'cause I would get, then you get burned out.
The average, average volunteer is usually good for about five years. After five years, they're usually getting out of the service, some of them are really dedicated. And we've got a lot of guys that have been there a long time and we've been going through some of the younger, younger people that, that aren't even making it to two or three years.
Yeah.
They'll come in and they see what it's like and how much time it takes. Almost all of our, all of our guys don't belong to any other organizations. They devote pretty much all of their, their, uh, extra time to the fire department, you know.
There was just an ambulance on a call.
Just a call, just, yeah, man. You know, they're, I mean, they dead, they're very dedicated, they give up a lot of personal time with their families and stuff and, and extra activities that go on. And, uh, they're, they're very dedicated. But, you know, it, I think we're gonna have to go to some scenario, part of this, we have to do something to, to cover some of the, some of the calls, either in the daytime or. You know, and then pick it up with some of the volunteers. I mean, it's gonna have to be a volunteer paid group, you know. But we definitely need to, to, to do something. And this has been going on for a few years now, we've been struggling, you know. You, people, people just don't wanna dedicate the time to get their E M T license and what it takes to do the, to, uh, be a fireman. All the training and stuff, it's just.
And, and you thought we were getting more on top of that because of one, some of them stepping up to do the, like the E M T.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're. We gain a couple and we lose a couple. We put on E M T class, we pick up a couple and then we lose a couple, you know. And, you know, we just, if we have a major incident where we have to have a lot of people, it's gonna be really rough.
You had one just a few days ago.
Yeah. I mean, we had a motel fire down here that, well, I mean, we had pretty much everybody in there. Yeah, yeah, but basically we just wanna try to, if we can just do something with the EMS side of it, it would just be.
We have a, we have a combined meeting with the city and the county coming up. And one of the things that we need to talk to the city about is see if there's any interest in a general improvement district. Which would be for the fire and the ambulance. Because right now, we cannot raise our taxes, our, our tax amount that we have. I was hoping that we could, but we found out we can't raise it at all.
Just this morning.
Yeah, um, I was thinking because the county's rate is lower than the city's, that maybe we could raise the county's part, but we can't do that. So it's, it, there's no wiggle room.
So there, there's some.
When's the meeting?
Um, on the twenty-fifth of this month. At four o'clock at, we're not sure, is, is it gonna be City Hall or City Hall?
So there's, I think there's some other options there, you can go to a, a district or a, what was the other one, um?
Have you guys looked into fire protection district?
We've looked into all of them, yeah.
It still would have to fall within our tax cap because it wouldn't generate a tax, right?
Yeah.
Taxes in, at the top.
So I looked at what the budget is right now for all the different fire departments and the ambulance. For all the fire departments, we're contributing a total of three hundred, just the fire departments. Three hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars of county money. Go, taxpayer money goes into supporting the fire departments. That's fifteen point five nine nine cents of tax money. For the ambulance, we're, the budget is, I mean, it is, it depends, but it's a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one thirty-seven. That's another six point two four one. So between the two, we're looking at twenty-two cents, twenty-three cents already coming out of taxpayer money that supports fire and ambulance. So without having something else, like a general improvement district or, and I, believe me, I don't know the answers to all that, I'm just putting it out there. There's no more money.
Yeah.
To, um, do anything else.
We gotta remember that the ambulance side of it actually is a, uh, they bring in money also.
Yeah, they do, but that's supposed to go towards new ambulance.
Yeah, so we're at like four hundred and some thousand right now.
Uh. Ambulances don't come out of the emergency fund?
They come out of the.
Emergency equipment, I thought that's why we formed that, was to pay for the ambulances and fire trucks. Originally, it was just for fire trucks and then it went to the sheriff's department also and then, uh.
It, it was amended so that it would replace the ambulance if needed. But what we've done is we've changed that because your balance is okay in your ambulance fund. That we've got wording in there that it just says, you know, if, if we have to use a portion or something like that. So, um.
And we're due for a, I think our, it's a fourteen is what we got now and it's every seven years we go for a new ambulance, right?
Well, that's what you'd like, whether we do it or not is another thing. But, um, I mean, how is the ambulance holding up?
Well, it's about forty-seven thousand now, forty thousand miles. The other one's got over a hundred and the other one's got over a hundred thousand, you know.
Yeah.
And we use, we pretty much use all three of them, you know.
There's a lot of times you, you have all three of them going.
Well, mostly two, once in a while three, but you need to have, if you've got two out, you need a backup. And so then you're looking at more people also, so you're stretching it, you know.
Hello, sorry.
Hi there.
I'm on call.
Thank you, Marty. Um, what we were talking about is the proposal and, you know, and we appreciate the work that you guys have done on this. But we're looking at, what, three hundred sixty thousand, four hundred and some thousand?
Yeah.
To do if, if everything was done, you know, just like it's presented. And what I was talking about was how much has already contributed taxpayer money to fire and to ambulance. We're already putting in, um, twenty-two cents at least, I mean, I didn't put a, of taxpayer money into support those two functions. And unless there is some way that we can do either a general improvement district or something. And I don't know the ins and outs, it was brought up today. We don't see how there's gonna be more money to support, you know, what needs to be supported.
What, what really worries me is what if, what if the, the fire department decided that they didn't wanna do it anymore?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we'd have to, we, we would have to do something like this and maybe it's time to actually do this. And Bryce had court, he was hoping that he could be here, but he said he'd be here just as soon as, as feasibly possible. But, you know, I, I don't know.
So the money that's in that fund, four hundred thousand dollars, does that all have to go to an ambulance or could some of it be used for the program?
Which, which fund are you talking about?
That ambulance fund.
One you guys are always talking about. So that has a four hundred.
Yeah, and, no, it would be up to the commissioners, I mean, we would listen to your recommendation and stuff, but it would have to be, um, we'd have to.
With the revenue generated by the turel?
Yes.
Are they talking about the option?
Yes.
That's what I guess they're talking about, that's why I was asking.
They're, they're thinking they have a balance in the ambulance fund of four hundred and some thousand.
Not in the ambulance fund, right?
No, the ambulance fund at the end of June was three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
Well, so do we, do you guys budget the, um, ambulance service out of that money?
That's what, yeah, what comes out of that.
Oh, you do, so that's not, that's basically not the, so our.
We usually budget about a hundred and twenty-four thousand in revenue each year of the ambulance. And as of the end of January, we've collected just over twenty-six thousand. I mean, is this sharp billing doing what there's.
We're, and that's another thing that we, you know, that we're having problems with that also.
Yeah, but see, this is the whole issue and this is what happened many years ago. Is the billing wasn't being accomplished for whatever reason, we lose the revenue. If we don't have the revenue coming in, we don't have the money.
Well, and that's why we kept something in this, if you, in the proposal. So I get a report every week from the billing company. But on top of what I do in a. But on top of what I do in a full-time position, I have to go backtrack.
Yes.
And go through every report that they're asking and follow up on whatever questions they have. Now they want us to get signatures for Medicare Medicaid patients. Now, if we're too busy or if we have ten patients on a scene, we're not gonna get that. So then that sits here and doesn't get paid. So I mean, you have to be full-time just to even work on the revenue of a portion of that. And I work on it as much as I can. But being a full-time employee at PGH, I literally go to the firehouse every morning at six AM before I go to my normal job and try to do all the vouchers, all the charting, make sure everybody's doing their charting. But I, what Sharp wants us to do is me go through every single chart.
So basically doing their, a lot of their work. Where when we were with Ramza, those guys were awesome. And we probably was with one sixty-nine or one seventy before we left them for one year.
So is, is Sharp the only one that we can use?
There's other ones out there. But I think the thing is too, is you have to have somebody that has a lot of time, almost a full-time employee that's gonna go over and take care of that part of it. If you can't just do it a few hours, you know, four or five hours a week, that's just not gonna happen.
So if we put in a full-time person to do that, could that full-time person also do some of the other things that we pay stipends for? So to take those stipends away and, and bundle them up into this position? Do you know what I'm trying to say? For instance, oh god, I can't think of everything, you know?
So if we made this position full-time, I obviously would go for it. And I would be checking every chart every day, making sure, or even every other day. Cause sometimes we don't have, we can't have ambulance calls every day.
Yeah.
But I'd be making sure that the mileage is there, that the signatures are there. I would actually backtracking, like I've been doing it as much as I can, going and finding the patients in Love Lock Nevada and saying, hey, can you sign this Medicare form for me? Um so that's part of what that person would do, is the charting and I think revenue would increase immensely if we had somebody who could check those charts every day or every week, at least once a week.
And you know, you're talking about volunteers that are going out on these calls. They're going out at two o'clock in the morning on a call and they're, they're out there for an hour and a half and two hours and they come back and then they've gotta go to work. So then that that report doesn't get done until maybe the next day or the day after that. They're supposed to be done within twenty-four hours. And like Marty says, you've gotta have signatures and stuff. And if you don't get that stuff, it's you have to have somebody that's gonna be dedicated to do some of this stuff. And, and you know, if you have that person that, if you have, actually, if you had a couple people that would do that, then you could have some people down there during the daytime that could handle some of these calls and get the uh we've got, most of our guys work, we've got a few people on shifts, but mostly daytime. They can't get away from work all the time.
And I'm one of them. I can't leave first in general unless it's the third place.
And nothing against.
Unless it's like the third place.
Yeah, and we've got six people at the hospital that work, that are on the fire department.
Yes, I know. The hospital supports this tremendously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But when they, when they don't let them, if they can't get away and go when they're, when we have the call, then it's like the people that are not on call are picking all that stuff up. You know, you've got one guy that's over eighty years old that's running almost a hundred, hundred calls a year.
Yeah.
And what's gonna happen when he retires? How are we gonna split those hundred calls up amongst the, the other five people that are?
He isn't gonna retire. He's just gonna fall over.
Yeah, so.
You know, he's not gonna give it up. But I mean, it's the same thing too with um on I eighty, when you go out on different calls and stuff. And I, and not, I understand the complexities of trying to get the information, you know, the insurance information. You know, everything, the reports and all of that, so that we can put it through Firehouse. But here we are, you know, again.
Not collecting any money.
No.
Yeah.
And.
So like the fire we had last week.
The uh.
Do you, at the motel?
The city one? You mean the motel fire?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do we try to collect from that insurance agency?
I would have to get, I would have to go down and get all the information from the owner, the insurance company and stuff like that. And I mean, that's just there's a lot of stuff that we could be doing like that. All these ambulance wrecks and stuff are going out on. If we don't send a rescue truck and the ambulance goes out there and they just do their thing, somebody's gotta follow up or go out there and get all that information. And you can't get all that information from the highway patrol leaders. So you pretty much have to be there to get it from.
So we currently pay a stipend for someone to do the grant writing and then to do the firehouse thing and fire inspections and everything like that. So is the individual that I'm referring to, without naming that person?
Yeah.
Isn't that person supposed to help follow up on that sort of thing so that it gets in the system?
He all, he'll only do the ones, he'll just do what we, the information we give him. He won't follow up on, no.
We, we give him information that we collect. He does not go himself.
No, cause he's not on the department. So it's basically, you have to have somebody that's gonna go out and get all this information on every, on every one of them. Go back on all the fires, get all the information on that and then we could bill on it.
So if we were to approve a full-time person to do that and require that person to do all that, and then at the end of the year, the person didn't get it done and didn't collect and we terminated them because they're not doing their job. Marty, I'm. Yeah, I mean, it, it's one thing, we have expectations that are never met.
Yeah.
And, and that's the sad part. And again, I am not picking on you guys because it is a volunteer fire department. And you do tremendous work. But you know, our hopes were, for a while there with Ramza, the, the revenue was coming in. And now we went to Sharp and nothing's coming in.
Well, it wasn't our choice to not be friends anymore. Yeah, it was not our.
No, it wasn't. I realize that.
Too busy themselves.
Yeah.
But is there another one out there that's better than this Mickey Mouse outfit?
Why didn't we change?
Because.
They couldn't keep up with their own billing.
They have so much of their own that they didn't, couldn't devote a person.
Yeah.
And they were so good.
They were, I know.
Well, I feel like Sharp doesn't communicate enough with us anyways. And if they do, it's through email. So if we could figure out, I don't know, maybe different company for the next.
Well, it seemed like there was not really a company that was in Nevada.
And these are from California. Sharp's from California.
Yeah.
And I think the only thing that they had that others didn't is they, they were under the other, like, remember how they already had Nevada.
Well, then they have the same program too. I think it's like the, that's why we chose them. They have the image trend and they were already working through that, so.
So I, I almost think if you would do two, you could do all that and then cover shifts, you know, cause they could do that and cover shift while they're down there, you know? And, and break up the days.
We're just seeing that full-time person could be at the firehouse twenty, be there. Like if, so say it was me or two other, whatever, I would do like two twenty-four hour shifts or whatever. I don't know how we have it done, but like just stay there.
But so, so on that line, so you're there doing.
Everything.
Stuff and you get an ambulance call.
Then she's gonna be.
Then you would go. But you have to wait for one more person to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where the suggestion for the hundred dollars a call was put in there. Ely doesn't, he said they trip over themselves. They fight over who gets to go.
I would love.
That's what they finally, Ely finally, Ely and the city of, of Ely, Ely, you know, the county and the city. The city actually, they got out of it and the county takes it all. They just give the money that they put in their budget to the city and they give it to the county. The county has, they have a chief and then they have two guys on shift all the time. So those two guys, what happens if they get an ambulance call, it goes out like to the volunteers. The volunteers, they, they come to the firehouse, they get the ambulance. One of them's a driver, one of them's um in the back. The one that, that takes care of the patients is a hundred dollars, the guy that drives is fifty dollars. If they don't get enough, then though, one of those guys kicks in. If they get two, two um volunteers, then one of the guys goes with the command truck and he goes, follows them and goes with them. And if they need help, they helps them load them and get them going. If they don't need anything, he goes back to the station. And then those guys do their, their fire part. They'll run an engine out and then their volunteers show up to the fire and then they go from there. So I mean, that's, that, there's a lot of different departments that have a lot of different scenarios that do the same thing. And that one's basically seems to be working good for them. And they do a lot of calls.
Who was that?
Ely.
Ely, okay.
Yeah.
So I've asked this before about PERS. Right now, we're paying in the budget, okay? And it's budgeted for if you had a full allotment of volunteers.
We pay on thirty for our department and we remember twenty-two is about our max.
Yeah, but it's budgeted right now for if you were at maximum. So in the budget, we have a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we technically would pay towards PERS. And I've asked you before if everyone in the department would be willing not to go to PERS. That money could be used towards pay, they're paying them or something.
I don't think it was unanimous.
No.
Yeah, and it would have to be unanimous.
And it's kinda hard because some of those guys got a lot of years in it.
Yeah.
And then some of them got.
Okay, and that's fine. So that, then I won't ask that question again, cause it has to be unanimous.
Yeah, and I had Emily ask their guys and Sean didn't, I don't think Sean said, uh, Wright Hatch didn't say either. But I know Emily said that they want. And our guys, we.
They want to stay with.
We couldn't get it to pass, yeah. And so you're even less than that because you've actually got three people in our department that don't get any PERS. So that's, that's.
I was just looking at what we had in the budget.
Yeah.
And that's what I was looking, not what.
I remember Sean actually saying in one of the meetings in here, he would just as soon have the money for his department than have the PERS, you know?
Yeah.
As an extra for equipment or for whatever they, whatever they need, you know? You know, and, and like, I, I mean, I know things were tough. Like last year, we, everybody took a big hit on their um budget. We all had to cut back ten percent on our budget right off the bat too. And I think, and I'm pretty sure we gave back a pretty good little chunk of money last year too. Reen could probably tell us what we actually spent last year, but we probably didn't spend a full hundred percent of our budget. We were probably.
I'm sure you didn't. So.
Yeah, you guys, I, all the departments, I think, came in.
So I mean, we do our, try to do our share to, to help, you know?
Do we have a, a, a number that, that could be supported? Do we have a budget number that could support a full-time? Do we know?
Well, if you look at the ambulance budget, I mean, that's, that's the only place. But before, tell me about Ely again so I can write it down. What did they do?
As far as.
You, you have been.
A hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Hundred dollars per person that responds and fifteen dollars a driver.
Yeah. And then do they have a full-time person or something? You said?
Two.
Two full-time.
So a paid um fire chief and then two other full-time people that are EMS or? They're EMS and fire. Okay, they're combined, okay.
Didn't Ely give up the purse?
No, they're, no.
Cause that was a big thing going back and forth.
No, they got in trouble because they were paying, they were, where we do a um it had to do with the stipend for the hundred dollar thing, where we do a uh ten night, whatever it is.
What, ten night?
Yeah, so where we do that, they were doing something different and they got in trouble for it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, cause you can't, yeah. The federal government doesn't like that. Is there another department or community besides Ely that has something like this as well?
Well, you've got Battle Mountain that they just went to, they find, they had to go, they'd have six people and then a manager.
They have, they have more money than we can have.
Yeah, so I mean, that was, that one's going on.
Ely gave their share to the county to pay for the positions and.
Yeah, the city, city gave up their, the amount that they were paying to run their city department. They made an agreement and then you just get that to the county and the county handles all of them.
So does the city contribute any money to the fire department?
Yeah, they do. And it's such a mishmash. They, they pay certain things, we pay certain things. It's the biggest mess.
It ends up that they, you guys pay sixty-five percent and they pay thirty-five percent. And so th- this is the weirdest thing. The, the city pays Marty's wages and she works for the county. Believe that. So, and then they pay, I, I do a maintenance deal agreement with them that I've had since in the seventies where I take care of everything down there. And then the chief's part comes from, they split that too. So they pay thirty-five percent of what the chief gives. And they set the wage on that and then that's less than five hundred dollars. So they pay thirty-five percent of that and you guys pay the rest of it. So for the chief, you pay four hundred a month, four fifty, something like that.
So it would be a lot easier if the city basically donated their part and.
Yeah, and made it.
And I don't even know if, if you took their budget, I'm trying to, I was looking at this morning, we're getting ready to do budget. Their, their budget for the fire department is way less and it's all kind of a, they figure in, they figure in her wages, they figure in mine, and then they figure in PERS. I think they pay the PERS and then you guys write them. How does that work?
No, we pay the PERS and they pay workman's comp.
Workman's comp.
And how, how it works, Karen, is the city pays Rodney and Marty and then they bill the county for our sixty-five percent. And then quarterly, they reimburse us for the Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department miscellaneous supplies through stall equipment. They do not reimburse for any capital outlaying or any of that stuff. They only give us thirty-five percent of what those, cause I have to send quarterly reports to Lisa.
So it's kind of.
So it's not all their expenses, it's certain expenses.
And they own two pieces of equipment in the firehouse. And the county has everything else. Yeah, and the firehouse. Which the original firehouse, the one in the front, was donated to them by Chief Opers.
So Reen, in the revenue portion, it shows that city-county fire department reimbursement is like twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five in the budget? Is that all that we get from the city technically?
That's her reimbursing for their thirty-five percent of those specific expenses.
And then you, do you recall what their budget is? I don't know what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a ballpark?
I think it was like, yeah. I got it. It'll take me just a second.
So Karen, you haven't posted the agenda yet, have you? Okay, cause we'll, we'll need to put. Cause what, we should be seeing if they won't just turn it all over to us and.
That would make it a lot easier and less confusing.
And then they could lease the building to us, the buildings for, we could lease it from them for a dollar a year or a dollar a month, I mean, whatever.
Yeah.
And then just be done with it. Yeah, it always is.
Yeah. So we were, while we put the best case scenario in there, if we could get one, two, or three paid people out, out of some way.
Yeah.
I was even thinking one paid person and then share a secretary between the two departments. Let the fire can pay for half the salary. I don't know. I was just trying to think of all kinds of scenarios. Three people would get you one person paid that you could have control of and make responsible seven days. So that one person would be responsible for billing for the ambulance and stuff like that? Yeah, the one person, someone has to be in charge. So the one person would be in charge and then the other people would just be EMT or EMT secretary.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'm sorry. So if we did one person, but didn't you say three?
I said one, two, or three. Three would be, three would get you the seven days coverage of a paid person that you could hold accountable.
Yeah.
Two people would get, you'd have open, you're gonna have open shifts no matter what because it just doesn't, when it's twenty-four seven. But um
So the one.
And then I thought, could one person be quote-unquote a secretary type person and we could share her with the firehouse somehow? I don't know how it works.
So the one paid person could be the fire, fire chief slash EMS manager?
I think you'd wanna have. You want that manager to be, cause that's the biggest majority of, your, your fire chief could be also be an EMT that fills, does calls too. So you're gonna pick up.
You'd be the second person to come in.
Yeah, you pick up a shift there too. So the budget for the city is sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. And then you guys are um hand back what, twenty thousand, Reen?
From your guys' budget?
Yeah.
From the city?
For the fire.
Have you reimbursed?
The revenue part from the.
Like forty thousand.
Yeah.
So they're, they're actually, we're running the city part of it on forty thousand.
Twenty thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
About forty thousand.
So Marty, this is a, I guess, a tough question, but so if we were to. So Marty, this is a, I guess, a tough question, but, so if we were to have this full-time person, what would we have to pay that full-time person?
More than I make now.
Not to put you in.
More than I make now, I think I put it on it.
We put in sixty-five, but.
Yeah, about fifty.
Where, like on that one, the EMT where it goes across the fifty?
Yeah. Seventeen years in the shooting.
Yeah.
Junior, high school.
Marty, are you an EMT?
I am an EMT, yeah.
How many EMTs do we have in our department?
Twenty-one.
Yeah, everybody, to be on our.
Well, twenty, one's not past.
We have one that hasn't passed yet.
Yeah, it hasn't passed this test yet, but to be on our department, you have to be an EMT and a fireman.
But we only have like four.
Right.
Advanced.
There's four of us that are advanced, yeah.
The advanced EMTs, which I would take a class, I would take the class and get my two.
Your advanced.
Whoever these other, these other ones are, you're gonna get at least another advanced and maybe two advanced, you know? Because they're gonna have, I mean, and there's a lot of benefit to having them down there, there's a lot of things they could be doing.
We have four advanced EMTs.
There's four advanced DMT.
Yeah, Rodney, Richie, Holly, who's a nurse, but we were able to get like an EMT license for her.
So you're not an advanced one? But you could be.
She will be.
I took the, so I'm not gonna written test. I passed the hands-on just fine, but I haven't passed the written yet.
Okay.
Would the fire department still require people to be both fire, um, firefighters and EMTs?
I think, I think.
Would you finally split it?
I think that's what holds us together and we could possibly, um, what would it be like a casual call? EMT that would come in and work a shift once in a while, too, you could, you could do that, that would be, you know, they're certified in that and they could come in and work a shift.
I think they should be both.
Yeah.
Like, I'd wanna be both.
If you allow them to choose, you'll have very few EMTs in every, you'll have already like fires.
Okay.
Most likely.
But we used to have four teams that we broke down into four teams and now we had to go to three to get enough coverage and then now it's almost to two teams, and so you're on, every three weeks, you go back on for a week, twenty-four hours a day for seven days that week, you know? And if we went to two, then you're on every, every other week and.
So if we had the one, the full-time person, how would that help that being on call, or would it?
Well, one thing, it would, the benefit, well, there would be a lot of benefits from it, cause you would be doing, your billing would get squared away.
Yeah.
You would, cause that person would be in charge of making sure that, so the revenue should go up. The stuff that's needed to be checked and taken care of and, and all the ordering and all the stuff that they're, what we're doing now, that would be on top of it. What, what else was on the list, it was?
Well, you'd have that one dedicated person, if you approved the stipend to go with the full-time person, you'll have EMTs following all of themselves for that hundred bucks, I can guarantee that.
It'd be nice.
So you have, you have your responsibility, but there's things that that person can do also, I mean, they could even do things, if it's a drop and go kind of project, they, they'll have downtime. You could say, hey, I've not done this project because I can't get someone to dedicate, and if it's a filing or sorting or whatever, they could come help, they just have to bring the ambulance. Well, they could go anywhere and help as long as it's not like a, can't be a receptionist or something like that, because they have to be able to run.
Yeah.
Um, there's fire, because they will also be on the fire department, there's a ton of fire things that you just mentioned a little bit ago that aren't getting done.
Like washing of gears and stuff.
Uh, to reduce cancer risk in fire now, you're not supposed to wear your turtlenecks twice if you've been to a fire. It takes four hours to clean one set of turtlenecks, just to get them clean, that's not drying time. And so, there's so much that can be done.
You have the extractors and everything now to do that, right, but you gotta put a bed and all that, yeah.
So we have this other company, not Rimsa, what is it?
Sharp.
Sharp.
Sharp. They're not too sharp.
Yeah, they're not too sharp. So if we had a full-time person, that could be doing that function. And certainly we pay them a set amount probably to do our billing for us, but they probably don't, not a set amount.
You mean to bring the billing to us all the way?
Sharp does a what, two percent or three percent?
Yeah.
What I'm thinking is.
Of course they clamp. So we don't.
Cut them out and put some of that money toward a full-time person.
But I don't know that the.
Someone who could do medical billing.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not just to be the thing to, to bill for.
I'm a commercial builder.
I'm just trying to raise some money here.
I'm not getting, sure.
I'm just saying that will take more hours than.
Yes, it will.
On top of what Marty, Marty does with no hours.
Yeah, cause, I mean, you have to do your ambulance check every morning and you have to do your keyways.
Have to do your road.
Yeah, we're not professional builders, we don't need to be doing that for either the fire calls or the ambulance call.
If we could just make sure that everything's done to where everything's there, so one, whoever we decide is gonna do the billing and follow up on that stuff, I think your revenue is gonna go back up into the, and another thing we could do, too, is our rates, we can raise our rates, too. I mean, we're not, we're not at a, a really high rate of, um.
What are the rates for the ambulance?
It's downloading.
Oh.
It's what?
Downloading.
Oh, downloading, I'm sorry.
There's a certain percentage per year you're allowed to raise your rates by insurance, it's not very much.
And that, but we haven't raised them in a long time.
Yeah, but you should figure.
Well, I reached out to her and told her that we'd like to raise them, but.
When there's two to five, I don't know what it is randomly, but. Insurance companies won't, if you bill, increase your rates over five percent, they will.
Throw it out.
Yeah.
I think, I, I'm, I'm not positive, but I thought that the, the rate was, um, nine hundred for the initial call to roll it out of the firehouse and then it was X amount of dollars per, um, loaded mile. And, uh, I'm, I can't remember what the loaded mile is, I know, um, Humboldt is thirty-eight dollars a loaded mile, you know? Yeah. So I mean, like these in-town calls where you're doing one mile, so you're gonna get, what we get right now is nine hundred plus the thirty-eight, but then if it's Medicare or Medicaid or then it's a way lower rate, right?
Yeah.
So that's the problem with the, with the billing part of it is, you know, you can, you get the bill, you get the, um, bill up there, but what they're gonna, the insurance company's gonna pay is a whole nother story.
Yeah, that's our, is nine.
And then.
Fifty, eight hundred to nine fifty.
Yeah, and then the loaded mile is, do you have that or?
I want zoom in.
Hold on, let me take that.
Computer or phone's heavy.
And then I would guess that Medicare doesn't pay, it only pays a certain amount.
Yeah. PC grab, it has eleven for one of them and twenty-five for another one, and then we charge twenty-seven dollars for oxygen. Just a regular BLS is eight hundred bucks. If we do, uh.
We do mostly BLS.
Yeah. That amount is eleven hundred dollars out the door and I can't remember what his mileage was, but it's higher than ours.
Well, they have to pay for those people.
So.
So could you get that, those rates, that information to Karen, so she can.
Email it to you.
Yeah, so she can distribute it to us, cause I can't write it down fast enough, so. So we have budgets coming up and we'll have to discuss this in the budgets and you'll be coming anyway for your budgets.
Yeah, oh yeah, I, I added the, well, on Marty's budget, we added the, the worst scenario was six, so I mean, that's gonna look pretty, you know, pretty rough.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about it, yeah. And then we have the city meeting coming up and we can discuss with them just giving or allowing the county to accept all of their, that they're doing.
And I think, and I think the benefit of, of the, if the, if the city and the county combined and they paid the county X amount of dollars to, to take over their part of it.
Yeah.
We would be way ahead, cause then we could go in and, we could go in and do, we're doing the fire inspection, so we could do the whole city, too, and that would, and it's really gonna save the taxpayers money because it's gonna give their ISO rating up and that, the insurance is gonna go, I just got a packet from them the other day for some information that they want, so I'm thinking there, it's not gonna be too much longer and they're gonna be back in here again. And you know what, the last, the, the city meeting that we had, we talked about the ISO rating, well, the water district still has not done what they're supposed to do for the ISO rating and they are, they're gonna kill us forty percent, they're gonna, forty percent of the test. I've talked to, I've talked to the manager a few times, quite a few times, ever since I've been chief, I've talked to him and basically, they haven't done it. I'm actually gonna be on the board meeting for this next month and I will be going in to talk to the board about it, to see what they wanna do. But then I just got a, um, a message from their, um, engineer, I guess, and they're gonna be doing some work on one of the tanks up there, the two and a half million gallon tank, and they wanna shut that tank down so they can do some work on it and drain it and, so I just got this, this, this morning, so I haven't met, called them back to see what's going on yet. But they wanna know what the fire department, what their, our thoughts are on it, so, and they did, last year, they had a tank shut down, too, put a new bottom in it, so. I'm not sure what all's going on, so. We definitely need to get the hydrants checked, it's gonna, we're gonna go to the worst, worst rating we could get for an ISO rating in the city. And the county, we put all new hydrants in out there and it should be up, so, I don't know, but anyhow, that's fire upside anyhow.
So total compensation, if you pay Marty what she asked for, um, we need to find seventy-five thousand dollars.
How many?
Seventy.
Yeah.
That's what I was just looking at, you know, you know, fifty, fifty thousand, five fifty-eight, plus, plus the rest of it. I mean, Reen, you would have that answer, is what, what we'd actually have to have.
And that's just the salary.
Salary and benefits.
We call and got the percentages.
But with the idea on that, Reen, what's, you know, if you have a, an employee that's getting paid fifty thousand, what's the rest of it cost?
Yeah, she just did it, that's what she did.
Seventy-six?
Seventy-two, one hundred.
What?
Seventy-two, one hundred.
Seventy-two, one hundred.
If I calculated everything we asked for, I think.
But you didn't, you, you didn't put in.
And purse is going up. Well, see, we calculated on the whole.
Yeah, you gave us, um, well, uh, we got those figures from.
That's a lot.
So tuning off percent more. You have division and dental in the name of it now?
Yeah.
That was the one.
Good. But I think that would generate the revenue you would pick up from what, making sure things are, I mean, it's, it's a full-time job, just with that part of it, you know? And keeping up with the, the billing and, and you, you gotta, you still have to train your people, you still have to do all that stuff, you have the light, you have all your licensing you have to do. There's like, it's, there's a ton of stuff that goes on down there that most people don't know about on both sides, you know?
I mean, there's, you know, we could, you don't wanna base, you don't wanna guarantee grants, but there are so many EMS grants out there that you could go for. We could approach the tribe, of course, that's almost like a grant because change over in leadership there. They could say no.
See, a lot of, a lot of those.
There's a lot of funding that you could look for, they're just not gonna be guaranteed.
So would that be Marty's job to look for funding, too?
Marty Petty's job.
This is my job, what about the individual that's supposed to be doing grants for us?
Yeah, we just.
I mean, I'm.
I know.
I'm, seriously, we're paying what, five hundred a month?
Yeah, there was that AFG grant that just letting Sean talk to him about that and.
Yeah, and, and so we need to discuss that.
So we roll that into.
Yeah, I think we start rolling in the stipends.
You have a couple of the right people in there, it's in the, in the fire department that are actually down there and I think you'll see a lot of that stuff happening.
And I don't have a problem increasing someone's salary when they start bringing in the revenue.
Yeah, no.
I might just mention, since we're talking about grants, I just submitted reimbursement for the full impact grant for the fire departments for most targets. Because I want the revenue to come into the county and it needed to be done.
But that wasn't accomplished by.
That's not my job.
No.
I did it, cause I want the county to get the money.
Well, I think that we need to put the. We need to. And then on the ISO rating, I was told that a lot of insurance companies don't use ISO anymore, is that true?
You know, I don't know about that, but I know it's a big thing with the fire service is the ISO rating, you know?
And, you know, I, I don't know.
We could get that information and, and when we have the, uh, the city-county meeting, we can talk about that.
Yeah, that would be good.
That'd be good info to have.
Because I'm hearing.
Put something together for you and.
That they're not using it, so it doesn't really matter, but. Well, they, they do, but I don't know what it is.
What, how do they do that now?
Yeah, so, since we kinda mentioned fire, too, the motel that was burnt down is the fire ins, did the state fire inspector is.
No.
Investigating? Why?
It wasn't, and there wasn't anything that we looked in there that looked really suspicious and I'm, I would, I'm sure that whoever their insurance is through is gonna have one of their guys come out and look at it, you know? But nobody got hurt and it wasn't, destroyed any of the property. From what we could see, it was all open in there with, uh, with wiring and stuff, uh, the meter, the meters had been set, they had been doing some, uh, they had been in there doing some copper pipes flooding and they had some power in there that was just hanging from the, from the ceiling. The, uh, they did have a permit to set the meter, I don't know about the rest, the city wrote a permit for it, I did get a copy of that permit from my report. I have.
Some of that arena, they said, right?
I, I don't know who it is, but whoever's in there doing it, I don't know, that's kinda up to the city for their licensing part of it and that's all.
So did it start, as far as you know, from the wiring?
It looks like, it's in the area where that stuff was at, in the middle of the building.
It's suspicious that I might keep that, okay.
There wasn't hardly any stuff in there, really, that's pretty much, all the walls were stripped, all the wiring was going in, they were sweating pipes in there and had some sheet rocks sitting on the outside, they have, they had a long ways to go before sheet rock. All the windows were out of it, cause I guess they were gonna put windows in, I didn't see any new windows there yet and, uh, so.
They spent a bunch of money for sheet rock, there were a lot of sheet rock.
It was just delivered that day, is what I.
Yeah.
So it's all covered, it's not hurt any, yeah, it didn't get hurt any, so, yeah, I think that's.
That's a pretty drastic step to get out of paying in sheet rock.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and it was pretty, by the time we got there, it was pretty much from one end to the other, it was a big fire. I mean, the guys knocked it down really quick and the overhaul went good and we were out of there like two-thirty in the morning, something like that.
We got one about two here.
Yeah.
Is that one, two-thirty in the morning?
No, it started at.
It started at nine-twenty-one.
Yeah.
Was when our first call went out, it took us five minutes to respond.
Yeah, we actually had an ambulance out at that same time and they, uh, actually just, they'd just, um, taken a patient to the hospital, they brought that in and they started, they got an engine going and I was, I hit there at the same time they did.
Do you have enough information from us or?
I think so, yeah, and I appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
And I know you guys work hard, I mean, that isn't the problem, but maybe we can come up with some solutions.
It's just three of the six only time.
I think it'd be great if we could, that's for sure.
And I think we'll have the Ely and stuff and try to find some other insurance hopefully.
Yeah.
Cause, and they don't do their billing either, they use, uh, um, almost all the departments and ambulance services will do, use their own, unless you're big like Rimsa and then they devote, I'm sure they have more than one person that they devote.
They probably have a whole department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Humboldt was just taking theirs, right, they just are bringing it back in. They just are bringing it back in.
So.
And that's all the way he does it, I think, even, real. Risky, maybe. Can't think of small.
So if we could come up with a solution, like for July one or something, the new fiscal year, would that work?
Or a solution in, uh, March, when we do the budget.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but I have an effect.
To start, and if they could start July one, it would be nice, but I think, I think the, it'd be nice just to have, would to have one, but I think you're gonna need a couple to.
I mean, we, every time we go back to the department, people will rally for a little tiny bit, but then.
Yeah.
Just can't sustain it, and so it's just, it is time to.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
All righty, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is, uh, three P M, uh, bring our county commission meeting for today back into session. We have, uh, a mask before approval to go into a closed personnel session. Person went to NRS two-four-one-point-oh-three-oh, uh, one, and NRS two-four-one-point-oh-two-oh, C, four.
So, you want a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and go into the closed personnel session as mentioned.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion approved. So I have to ask every, uh, everybody in here to please step outside since this is a closed session. Uh. I've been waiting for Lacy, are you ready? Okay, you are ready. Okay, uh, we, uh, are back from our closed session and the next item is discussion of possible action regarding administrative action up to and including termination of Dixie McKay, Persian County Community Center Director. And at this time, I would accept public input. Anybody want, have anything that they would like to say first off?
Is there a motion based on closed session?
Wait, what?
Yes, please, Jim.
Oh, I guess I need a motion for first, if there is a motion. If there's. To withdraw from a closed session, is that what you're saying?
I'll make a motion that we come out of closed session and open up the meeting.
I'll second.
I would just do it. Motion in a second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then Larry, if there's a motion that needs to be. If there's any action, can we take it?
Before I ask for comment?
Or can actually discuss and take action, whatever they need to do to address it.
Before you have. So does the commission have any, uh, comments, uh, action regarding the administrative, uh, function we just?
Are you asking for a motion?
Yes.
That you're asking, did you have, or do you want me to do it? Or do you wanna do it, since you're there?
Um.
Oh, okay, um.
Larry, can you not speak up because we, I can barely hear you out here.
Yeah, it's kind of.
It's hard through the masks, I'm, I'm sorry.
They're dumb, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I, I can't hear anything, so.
Could you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Karen.
You're very welcome. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, um, we will, the commissioners will instruct the commissioner liaison to meet with the community center director, the buildings and ground supervisor, um, the custodian that's being supervised between the two of them and the district attorney to discuss issues and problems and working out the supervision, um, concerns that we have. And that we look at supervision training for both, um, the community center director and, can I say the other one? The buildings and ground supervisor, the buildings and ground supervisor, and Pool Pack offers that. Um, and that during this transition of everything, that hopefully the commissioner liaison can have some regular meetings to make sure things are going as planned and as they should be. Am I missing something, anything?
I don't think so.
It's long enough of the motion, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Aye, I thought we were gonna have discussion.
Now, we can have some discussion and, and some, uh.
Can I say something?
Oh, yes, by all means.
Um, hopefully, this will solve the problem. I would like you to get with Karen, um, about getting the training with Pool Pack. And that way you'll be able to handle this, handle the problem better, hopefully. And, um, as soon as I can get with Bryce and get a date for everybody, we will start having, I would like to have monthly meetings.
And I would like to say for the audience, um, purpose that unfortunately, the way we are required to word a closed session regarding a department head, what we call an unclassified employee, um, if we want to discuss as a board anything with that individual regarding what is happening to maybe come up with a solution, we have to do this type of wording. It doesn't necessarily mean that the individual has done anything wrong or there's a, uh, a complaint against their character or anything like that, or that we're even looking at termination or disciplinary action. We simply cannot meet as a three-board commission without this wording, and it's not our choice. We're required by law to do that. So, you know, some people are very, some people have voiced a concern that it, it, it has an effect on the employee that's named in this, and I realize it does. Unfortunately, we've had to do this with other individuals as well. And, um, you know, I apologize for that, but that's how it has to be in order for us to sit down and talk in a closed session about things that we cannot discuss in an open meeting. So I hope people will understand that a little bit. Yeah.
You done to say?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, now we would go into the part of the agenda where it says public input. Uh, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to five minutes per person. Please, would you like to make some comments?
I was just here to. She asked me for her character and professionalism and she was very professional about it. And I know her character should look like.
Thank you, Bruce.
Anybody else?
I'll just, and I got first to get back, I've committed for probably fifteen, eighteen years in different capacities. Has always been very professional and a job, so, just no problems.
Um, I would just like to say that Dixie is one of the most successful people that I've met in class bar. And I have a transplant, I'm evil, but she's hustle with, any questions you have, she can direct you to the right person. I've never known her to be nothing but one hundred percent professional in everything she does. And had talked a lot about it in frontier days. The only complaint, and it's not really against Dixie, is the community center is gorgeous. You have made so many improvements to the community center, that makes it a joy to go in there and, and hold functions. But, there's no way nice to put, I don't wanna go into a locker room when I go there and do crafting, which we have a four-day event twice a year, and I don't wanna go into a locker room, and that's what the carpet smells like. The carpet needs to be shampooed. I, you've, you've put all the splitting into stuffing and Dixie has made so many improvements that it would be a shame to let one little thing like this have to put a diaper on things and. I just wanna say that I'm a hundred percent Dixie, she is fantastic.
Good, thank you, anybody else?
Yeah, I run the four-day event twice a year. We've had, NIS comes in and puts in our internet, we pay for that. Our internet went out in September, we called her on a Saturday and she came down and let NIS come in and reset the modem. Not only that, I don't have to pack up my kitchen. I have dish reds, I have bowls, there's pans for the hot cards that we've never got before. There's so much improvement, but when I go in there and the carpet stinks, my allergies go bad, my asthma goes crazy. And I'm not the only one out of my group that has asthma. So I bring in diffusers and other things trying to offset our allergies. And I just, it's no reflection on her because she's been totally professional, she's totally improved the community center. I love the community center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh. Colby?
I have to say that I am blessed to work with such an amazing person, she's one of the finest people. But aside from that, she is insanely professional. When I ask her to do a task, it's done practically the same day. Um, I am sad that she's having to face this situation, I don't know what was said in the other hearing, but I have to say that she is one of the most professional people I've ever worked with.
Thank you. Any, any Zoom? Doesn't look like. Nothing comes up. Hearing no further, this meeting is adjourned.